Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated.
I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I advise that councillor Murphy will be absent today and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that councillor Murphy be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Are there further apologies? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. Councillor Cassidy will be an apology from today's meeting and I ask that he be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Kim that councillor Cassidy be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,774th meeting held on Tuesday the 26th of August 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that the minutes of the 4,774th meeting of council held on the 26th of August 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it. I would now like to call on Ms Jackie Ryan, who will address the chamber on the Brisbane Writers' Festival 2025. Please proceed when you're ready, Ms Ryan. You have five minutes.
Thank you. I've been advised that someone vertically challenged such as myself is better off seated than standing. To the Chair, Lord Mayor, councillors and CEO, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name, as advertised, is Jackie Ryan. I'm the artistic director of the Brisbane Writers' Festival. The iteration, which is about five weeks away now, which is going to run from 9 to 12th of October, will be my third as the artistic director, though the festival itself is 63 years old. It started back in Rwanda days. The Brisbane City Council has given an enormous amount of support over the years, not just with funding, but also with marketing, venue support, programme distribution and the opportunity to speak at gatherings such as this. I'm especially grateful to the creative communities team and councillor Vicky Howard for their keen interest and hands-on support. It's very clear that you wish as well, so thank you. It has been a successful few years for the Brisbane Writers' Festival, with ticket sales doubling since 2022, which has necessitated our move from our old venue at State Library of Queensland to the bigger and incredibly beautiful luxurious building, the Brisbane Powerhouse, which of course brings us closer again to the Brisbane City Council. We've been working with the Brisbane Powerhouse team for the better part of a year now and as I mentioned at the launch, I keep thinking, oh, well, it's just the honeymoon period or a courting or something. Nobody can be this nice all the time, this helpful all the time, this honestly saintly. There has not been a single poor interaction that the teams, firstly by Kate Gould, then by Phoebe Meredith, have been absolutely incredible and have had our back at every step of the way. At the launch, I did actually propose to the building, Brisbane Powerhouse, on behalf of the Brisbane Writers' Festival, because we're very keen to stay there and with you for a very, very long time. That's one of the reasons I'm here today, actually. I'm very keen to make our debut a success at the Brisbane Powerhouse and because I'm greedy to ask for even more of your help. So since we're just five weeks out, anything you can do to help get word out about the festival, we'd be very grateful for, because we do want it to be a really big hit. We want people to be complaining that they couldn't get seats or everything sold out or not so much that we need a bigger venue again, because we don't want to leave. So we can draw a line somewhere, but anything you can do to help, we'd be very grateful. So what can you do? Start with please urging them to look at the programme. We've got some hard copies outside there, but anyone can go to the Brisbane Writers' Festival online and you can see a PDF version of it. They've got them all around the powerhouse at libraries. Copies are being distributed to your wards, so you can hopefully share the love there. So what's at the festival? Well, we've got local favourites like Trent Dalton and Astrid Jorgensen from Pub Choir fame, commercial bestsellers like Sally Hepworth, Fiona Mash and MacIntosh, Dua Morrissey. Some of you, if you're like me, it'll feel like Old Home Week, because we've got some 90s Australian superstars in the form of Yana Vend and Andrew Denton and Steve Visser, who all have books out with us this year. We try to have something for everyone in addition to bringing the festive to festival. So if you're interested in comedy, we've got it. Poetry, politics, crime. If you're a dragon-loving romanticy fan, we've got you. We've got a romanticy all-stars panel and an international hit, Cali Hart is going to be appearing. So we've got everything from a 10-time Muay Thai world champion fighter through to a lady talking about the impact of women's weekly cooking on Australian society by way of Andy Griffiths talking about the tree house. So we really have tried to have something for everyone. In addition to being instructed about my lack of height today, I've also been assured that I will be cut off at the five-minute mark. So they say a picture is worth 1,000 words, so I think names can be worth 1,000 seconds. So here are some appearing at the festival. Michelle Bridges, Garth Nix, Craig Sylvie, Oni Sky, Anne Summers, Helen Garner, Anita Heiss, Bertini Hughes, Holly Wainwright, Michael Robotham, Charlotte Wood, Cherea Pitt, Helen Go, Steph Tisdale, and please believe me when I say there are a whole lot more. And to please look at the programme if you haven't already and to instruct your constituents to look in the programme. As I say, we're five weeks out. I want it to be a big hit. One of the best ways it can be a big hit is if people know it's on. So we'd be very grateful. We're grateful for all the help you've given us already. Thank you for your time today. I hope to see you at the festival.
Thank you, Ms Ryan, and well done. I'm going to call upon councillor Howard now to respond.
Well, thank you, Chair, and of course it gives me a great deal of pleasure to thank Jackie. Jackie addressed our committee this morning and I think I can speak on behalf of our committee to say it was one of the most entertaining ones that we've had. And I know that five minutes is just not long enough for you to say all of the amazing things that's going to happen at this year's Brisbane Writers' Festival. I've known Jackie now for a few years and I just have seen the festival grow and we heard that this morning with some of the stats that were there. And stats are very boring when you're talking about a Brisbane Writers' Festival, but to hear the names of the authors and to know that you have put together a programme that is just amazing. I do, the reason that we ask people like Jackie to come to our committee and to come and speak to council is for you all to hear the amazing work that the Brisbane Writers' Festival is doing, so that you can go out to your communities and let them know. And I really want to thank my committee this morning. I want to thank councillor Strunk for particularly asking a question about a writers' group that he has in his area and to know that if you have a writers' group in your area that you think might be interested, please reach out to us. You can do that through my office and we'll make sure that you're connected to Jackie. But it is amazing, all of the work that's done. We are so thrilled that you're also at the powerhouse. I think that that is a perfect fit. It's something that I know the powerhouse team are so excited about. Every time I see them, they're telling me how fantastic it is to have you there. I have people coming up to me on the street saying that they've heard about the Brisbane Writers' Festival being at the powerhouse and how very keen they are to get along. So I just know that your figures are going to go through the roof this year. But I really want to appeal to all of the councillors in the room. We're going to send you some books. We're going to send you some tiles that you can use for social media. Please get the message out there. If you have interested groups or even schools that you think might be interested, please reach out through my office and we'll put you in touch with Jackie. But Jackie, one of the things that you didn't have time to touch on, of course, is that the front of the book, which looks like this, and they're all outside, is that this is by the most amazing artist, local artist, Phoebe Paradise. Now, Phoebe is a work that, as we can see, captures the colour and the character of our city. And I think that you've mentioned that we think we're lucky that we got her just at the cusp before she becomes so famous that we can't afford to put her on the cover of our books. But the Shriner Council truly is proud to support Brisbane Writers' Festival. We love your work. We love what you do. We know that we will continue supporting you into the future. And I want to say a huge thank you for coming along today and letting us know the things that are going to happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Howard, and thank you, Ms Ryan, for coming in today. Thank you. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the Shriner Council has long advocated for common sense solutions that keep Brisbane moving. Sometimes the key to busting congestion isn't building new infrastructure, but cutting red tape or red lights. Can you please update the chamber on how we are advocating to bring Queensland's road rules into the 21st century?
Lord Mayor.
Well, thank you councillor Marks for the question and a good one, because when it comes to keeping Brisbane moving, there's multiple ways that we can practically help with that. There's ways such as introducing the Brisbane Metro and turn-up-and-go services. There are ways such as reviewing Clearways. There are ways such as introducing AI technology. But there's also ways such as initiatives like Left Turn on Red, which can reduce delays in the network. Now, Left Turn on Red is something that this council successfully trialled and at the time, I was the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee in that period between 2012 and 2016. And the Lord Mayor at the time, Graham Quirk, asked me to progress this. So I went about identifying where this was used elsewhere in Australia, and there's a number of locations, and also knew that the Gold Coast Council had had a look at it as well and done a trial. And so I went and visited them, talked to them. I talked to other entities such as the New South Wales Government. And then we kicked off a trial of five sites. That was in November 2013 and the intersections were at Cooperoo, Sunnybank, Albany Creek, Stafford and Chermside. Those early results were fantastic at those five locations and we had a great response from people that were using them, including surveys showing 85% of the people that had used those intersections were supportive and 95% understood how it worked as well, which is quite remarkable, given that they weren't otherwise in use in Brisbane at that time. So based on that initial trial, we then in 2015 rolled out almost 50 different intersections with Left Turn on Red in all parts of Brisbane. And that, once again, was successful and something that was well received by the community until Mark Bailey got involved. Former Minister Mark Bailey, he really had a problem with Left Turn on Red and it was a personal one. It was something he took personally. He set about trying to stymie this trial that we were doing. And so first he made some adjustments to the guidelines, which reduced the number of intersections from around 50 down to just 17. So a lot of them had to be removed because of Minister Bailey's involvement. And if that wasn't enough, 17 intersections, in 2021, Minister Bailey then made it illegal to put up a sign saying Left Turn on Red after stopping. So technically, the road rules still say that you can do this, where it is signed to do so, except it's now illegal for us to put up a sign. So a remarkable intervention there from the minister, which stopped something that was well received by the community, reduced delays and operated very safely. Now, at those intersections and one of the requirements of the trial was that we monitored them very closely. There were more than 15 million movements through those intersections during the period of our trial. And out of those 15 million movements, there were two accidents only. Those two accidents did not involve pedestrians or cyclists. And so the reason that was stated at the time by Minister Bailey was that it was unsafe for pedestrians and cyclists. The evidence showed otherwise. And so at the same time, there were thousands of other accidents at intersections for different reasons, but it wasn't caused by Left Turn on Red. So our evidence and the information we provided showed that it operated very safely and that in the cases of those two cases of crashes, there weren't any pedestrians or cyclists involved. And so it had a good safety record. Now that we have a different government in George Street, it's time to review and ask if we can reintroduce Left Turn on Red. And so I've written to the minister to ask that we reverse this silly decision that was made and allow us to continue on with the Left Turn on Red in those appropriate situations. And so that's something that I think the wider community will support and something that we're keen to continue progressing. Once again, we obviously would only do this in locations we believe that it is safe to do so, but we believe there are a lot of those locations right across Brisbane. And so I would ask all councillors to jump on board with this initiative. It's a good one. It can help keep Brisbane moving and it's something practical we can do at a low cost to reduce delays for people using the network. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Kim.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. According to Brisbane Zero, just 3% of people actively homeless in Brisbane this June were housed. Today, the Brisbane Labor team met with representatives from Micra Projects, North West Community Group and Naris Street. And I welcome Beau and Peter, who are with us in the gallery today, along with the rest who are listening online right now. These organisations have told us there are a number of barriers preventing those experiencing homelessness from permanent housing. Lord Mayor, you've previously said in this chamber that your LMP administration is doing enough. Do you stand by that statement today?
Lord Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We have a very strong record when it comes to providing more support than any council has ever done when it comes to the area of homelessness and providing practical support. We are proud, for example, of the introduction of the Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant Programme, a programme which has helped 6,000 people already and a programme that did not exist under previous administrations. It was something that was introduced by this administration and something that we are proud to continue supporting and continue funding each and every year. It was originally going to be a one-off programme. You'll remember that there was a one-off windfall that we received from some investments that council had made in Super. And rather than just putting that into consolidated revenue, we actually decided we'd put it towards a Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant. And the response from that was so good that we decided to make it a permanent ongoing programme. We also are very proud of the work that many sections of council do when it comes to engaging with people who are experiencing homelessness to make sure that they can get the support they need.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Collier. I caution you, you know very well, you don't call out while another councillor's on their feet speaking. Lord Mayor.
So the Public Space Liaison Officers do a wonderful job and they're making sure day in, day out, that people experiencing homelessness know what support is available and linking up people with that support. We've advocated very loudly for some out-of-the-box options as well, which include activating the 500-bed pink and bar quarantine facility that was disused to be a place where people could potentially experience some short-term accommodation or before they move into longer-term options. We know that that was resisted by Labor councillors and that was disappointing. We've just recently given a grant to a manual city mission to open a 24-hour shelter, an overnight shelter.
That's right.
And this is not a Brisbane City Council responsibility. This is a state government responsibility, but we are stepping into this space because we care and we want to see an outcome reached. But what we are also doing because we care is we're not accepting unsafe, unlivable conditions for people experiencing homelessness in dangerous tent encampments in parks. That is not something anyone should be living like. It's not compassion to leave people in those kind of dangerous, unsafe situations. And we want more for people who are experiencing homelessness. We also continue to provide support through Homeless Connect, which is a wonderful initiative. And also, we continue to provide support for the Brisbane Housing Company, who have already delivered thousands of apartments that are either affordable or social housing and have the plan to deliver thousands more. And in fact, this year alone, we're seeing hundreds of new apartments being brought online by Brisbane Housing Company. And so, as I said, these are not traditionally council areas of responsibility, but we care and we've been stepping up and going above and beyond. And I would challenge, I would challenge anyone that seeks to play politics to identify another council in Queensland.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Collier, you are cautioned again, and councillor Kim. You've asked the question and the Lord Mayor is answering it. Please be quiet. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I would challenge opposition councillors to identify another council in Queensland who's doing more to support people experiencing homelessness, because they won't find one. They will not find one. And I didn't even mention the fact that we provide a 100% discount on infrastructure charges for community housing and social housing projects. That is something that we passionately believe. And I didn't mention our Community Housing Partnerships Programme, which sees vacant council-owned houses being made available to community organisations to provide support and accommodation. And so there's a whole range of things that we're doing. But what you see is the opposition trying to peddle mistruths. The reality is, if you care about people experiencing homelessness, you will not accept them living permanently in parks. That is not a sign of a city that cares. And all around the world, you're seeing councils, often on the left of the political spectrum, coming to the final realisation that it's not okay to allow people to stay permanently in parks and in public spaces. And so you have cities in the US that are very left-leaning and that have left-leaning mayors, they've decided that people need to be brought indoors. They can't be allowed to stay permanently in public spaces.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
One moment, councillor Adams. Point of order, councillor Collier.
Chair, I rise. I move the suspension of standing orders in order for me to move the following motion, that this council update the housing and homelessness strategy titled Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy, which was last modified in April 2023.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Kim to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The nos have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right and nos to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the nos have it. The voting being seven in favour and 17 against.
That has lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Adams.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Chair, I move that the motion currently lying on the table from the 14th of May 2024, that council increase the Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant come off the table for debate.
Seconded. Has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Kim that the motion from 14th of May 2024 be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The nos have it. The motion is lost.
Division.
Division called by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right, nos to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the nos have it. The voting being seven in favour and 17 against.
That is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Adams.
Third-time lucky, Madam Chair. Thank you. My question is to Chair of City Planning and Economic Development Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, can you please update the chamber on how the Shriner Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better by creating more to see and do in our city, by continuing the growth of the night-time economy and supporting live music and entertainment in our city?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you to councillor Adams for the question. Through you, Madam Chair, councillor Adams knows Brisbane is Australia's lifestyle capital and will continue to capture global attention as one of the best places in the world to visit. As we all know, River Stage is one of Australia's most iconic music venues and the Shriner Council are now looking to make it even better. Madam Chair, we will seek a private partner to upgrade and operate the River Stage in time for the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, ensuring these costs aren't passed on to ratepayers and renters of the city. Later this month, an expression of interest campaign will open to seek proposals from experienced venue operators. These venue operators will be asked to submit their proposals to transform the River Stage with new and improved facilities coupled with state-of-the-art sound management. The iconic music venue was built in 1989, following the great success of a temporary stage by the Brisbane River during Expo 88. The venue has attracted a range of local and international artists over its 35 years, including Powderfinger, Macklemore, Benson Boone, Teddy Swims and a couple of my favourites, Vance Joy and George Ezra. Last year alone, there were 38 events held at the venue, which attracted over 245,000 people. The new operators will be granted a long-term lease in exchange for significant investment in the much-loved venue. The new operating model proposed will ensure that River Stage is upgraded while council funds are invested in better roads and improving public transport, getting Brisbane residents home sooner and safer. Madam Chair, the River Stage will remain owned by council and continue to be available for community events. Some of the notable community events held at River Stage over the past few years include the annual Lord Mayor's Christmas carols, streaming of the FIFA Women's World Cup and subsequent Fan Celebration Day of the Matildas, Broncos Fan Day in 2023 and Run Army Charity Run in 2022 and 23. Council currently operates and maintains the River Stage, which makes a significant contribution to the local economy. Council's record supporting vibrant precincts like Howard Smith Wolves, West Village, South Bank and Fish Lane has continued with recent facilitated improvements to River Stage. The River Stage has been flagged as a live site for the Brisbane 2032 Olympics and Paralympics. And this partnership will future-proof the venue when the city will need more world-class venues that showcase our vibrant music and cultural scene. Madam Chair, by getting a world-class venue operator involved, we will lock in a significant private investment for River Stage while ensuring council funds are directed to our roads, transport and more to see and do in our suburbs. The Shriner Council vision is for River Stage to attract more events, more visitors and create more unforgettable memories for Brisbane residents and visitors. Brisbane is Australia's lifestyle capital. And under this plan, the future of live music by the river will continue to put Brisbane in the number one spot. Madam Chair, as more and more people choose to live in Brisbane and visit Brisbane, a revamped River Stage will attract more for people, showcasing the city's arts, culture and live music scene. We want the world's best acts lining up to perform at River Stage, because it's one of the best venues in the country. And I look forward to updating the chamber throughout the process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for councillor Perry. Two weeks ago, you were quick to label anti-genocide and anti-salvation protesters as radical activists. Yet, when neo-Nazi groups marched through our city this weekend, you were silent. Why do you only speak up to demoralise communities standing for human rights, but stay quiet when it comes to actual hate groups' speech?
Madam Chair, I think you're ruling, this is not a question that relates to councillor Perry's portfolio at all.
Roads, roads and permits.
But having said that, I'm happy to take the question as-
Chair, my question is to councillor Perry.
I'll take the question. We have a councillor Perry, but not a councillor Perry.
Point of order, Chair.
Thank you, calm down.
My question was for councillor Perry, not for the Lord Mayor.
Councillor Perry.
I'm happy to take the question.
Councillor Perry.
I have no problem taking this question. More than happy to actually, councillor Massey. What I condemned in that speech I made two weeks ago were people standing in front of photos of terrorists and people that kill women. That's what I spoke about.
One moment, please.
May I finish? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Johnson, I caution you. Councillor Perry.
That is what I spoke about. And what I was speaking to was using the Story Bridge, which lies within my portfolio. And the fact that we wanted people to be safe, and the Story Bridge was not the appropriate location for that. Now, I had-
One moment, please councillor Perry. Councillor Massey, that is inappropriate, completely inappropriate. And I'm strongly cautioning you, and I will warn you if you do it again. You've asked the question. You don't get to respond if you don't like it, the answer. It's not for you to say councillor. Councillor Perry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as I was saying, when I spoke about that two weeks ago, I was talking about people wanting to use the Story Bridge, and it wasn't safe to do so. And what I wanted most of all, and what I think we all want, at least on this side of the chamber, is for all Brisbane residents to be safe in the city. And the reason that the court ruled against it was in large part due to the fact it would have blocked emergency services from getting to people who needed their help. That was the key reason, and that's really important in this city. The protest that happened on Sunday, I will talk about that. Because I was at a multicultural event on the weekend, where I looked at a number, probably about, I think it was about 600 to 1,000 people were at this event, of incredible Indian people in my community who call Australia home. And as the granddaughter of a Greek migrant, who loves this, loves this country and loves this city that has given me and my family everything, I am so disappointed with people that oppose immigration. Because it is, it is one-third of Brisbane residents were born overseas. And every single week, indeed sometimes twice a week, we are welcoming new citizens to our city. And all of us partake-
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order councillor Massey.
Just, just to repeat, why have you stayed silent? When it comes to actual hate groups?
You've asked the question.
That's the question, is why have you stayed silent until this point?
You have asked your question, and councillor Perry has five minutes to answer that. Councillor Perry.
So as I mentioned, the last time I spoke about this was in regards to the Story Bridge. Now, the protest on Sunday did not apply to the Queensland Police Service to march across the Story Bridge. There was no threat to safety. There were no concerns around accessing or blocking, sorry, blocking emergency services on the Story Bridge. There was no, there was no court application. So I didn't speak on it. But I am speaking on it now. And if councillor Massey cares to answer, and instead of inciting division and always trying to make a political point with deeply, deeply offensive things, and I just, it blows, it blows my mind, actually. It blows my mind, because what, what could be happening in this place is asking me real questions about real projects in your ward. What about that? But no, 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 there's none of that.
One moment, please councillor. Can you, thank you. Councillor Massey, I had strongly warned you to stop doing that and calling out just because you don't like the answer. So as you have failed to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, I hereby warn you, in accordance with Section 21.6 of the Meeting's Local Law 2001, and failing to comply with this request may result in an order being issued. Now ask everyone to remain quiet while councillor Perry answers the question. Councillor Perry.
And also, what I did say two weeks ago, if you recall, was that the things that were happening over in the Middle East concerned me too. Those images of starving children was horrible. All war is horrible. And no one here supports it. No one here supports the actions that were taken by some individuals on Sunday. In the same way, we don't support the actions that were taken the week beforehand. There are extremists on both sides, so we all must coexist in this place, in the sensible middle. That's what's most important. And we shouldn't be egging them on, and we shouldn't be encouraging it, and we shouldn't be creating more division within our community. That is not our role as councillors. That is not our role as representatives of our residents in this place. But it seems to be what you think it is councillor Massey. And that's disappointing, because I have a lot of relatives that live in West End, most of whom are the children and grandchildren of immigrants. And they are so disappointed. They are so disappointed in their local representation.
Further questions councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Chair of the Public Transport Committee councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, with River Fire just around the corner, can you please update the chamber on what residents should expect when travelling on our ferries and buses during the event?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to councillor Dixon for the question. River Fire is, of course, a very exciting event that many, many people across Brisbane enjoy. People travel from far and wide to participate in that particular event. And councillor Dixon, her community having a number of ferry stops, would of course be very interested in how people can travel from the Hamilton Ward into the city. But I'm sure it's not, it's merely the ferry users and not those who have their own private moorings in Hamilton, and how they would also get in to see River Fire themselves. But River Fire, as I say, is a festivity that lights up the sky. But it is, in so many ways, a riverine event. The most pronounced impact during River Fire is on the temporary suspension of services through the city core of the network. From about 6:15 that evening, for approximately two hours, ferry services between Mowbray Park and North Key will be halted. This measure is vital for public safety. QT Gardens Point Terminal will also close from 4pm. This closure is necessary as the site is transformed into a staging ground for event operations and emergency management. Consequently, passengers who rely on cross-river services between Maritime Museum and QT Gardens Point will need to adjust their travel plans. Marta Hill Busway Station and South Bank Train Station will provide access to the, to the area around Maritime Museum to address this alteration. The Citycat service, as in previous years, will see modifications during River Fire. Last year, Citycats from the east continued to Sydney Street, but not to New Farm Park. This year, due to the newly established no-wash zones, Citycats will be unable to keep to their timetable beyond New Farm Park. This means all services from the east will terminate at New Farm Park, and passengers beyond this point will need, will need to seek alternative options. Last year, Mowbray Park was also closed, and this pattern continues, reinforcing the need for passengers to plan ahead. It's crucial to note that while services will be suspended in the central core of the route, ferry operations will continue between UQ St Lucia and Milton, and between North Shore-Hamilton and New Farm Park. For those wishing to reach South Bank before the fireworks, the final Citycats will depart from 5:45pm from North Shore-Hamilton and 6:15 from UQ St Lucia. After these times, access to South Bank via ferry will be restricted until services resume. River Fire also causes strategic adjustments in other ferry routes. Last year, Holman Street experienced significant congestion due to its popularity as a vantage point, resulting in hours-long queues and disruption at Riverside Terminal. To address this, the route will operate every seven and a half minutes this year, aiming to alleviate congestion and provide a smoother, smoother flow for event goers. As mentioned, the Maritime Museum QT Gardens Point route will not operate after 3:45 this year due to the Gardens Point closure. The Ballyborra-Tannerife route remains unchanged in its regular schedule, but will be suspended from 6:30 until 8:30. Additional services will be provided between Riverside and Holman Street from 4pm to 6:30pm, and again from 8:30pm until midnight. Say that again. Additional services will be provided between Riverside and Holman Street from 4 to 6:30, and then again from 8:30 to midnight, ensuring those attending River Fire have sufficient means to travel, both to travel to the event and then home at the conclusion of the event. Two Citycats will be pre-positioned at the South Bank Terminal to assist the safe and efficient movement of River Fire attendees at the completion of the show. Regular services for all impacted ferry routes will resume Sunday 7th of September. River Fire itself is again celebrated across the network, but the important part is that while the event is occurring inside that central exclusion zone, the ferries will work on a reduced timetable outside that area. So you can still travel outside, but those who want to come into the exclusion zone won't be able to through that period. And the cross-river ferry system will also be halted during the presentation. I also want to recognise the preparations of officers to ensure this exclusion zone occurs and that all travel is safe. But also, just to make further comment about that, because the event, so many people view it from South Bank, oftentimes the South Bank Terminal, which is our most popular, sees significant queuing as a result of the trip home. We will have Citycats waiting, ready to move people out of that at the conclusion of the event. So there will be no lag as vehicles come in. They'll be waiting and ready to go as soon as services resume. And then ordinary services will continue to get people home along the river at the conclusion of that, at that event.
Thank you councillor Wines. Further questions councillor Griffiths.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you recently announced a review into low-medium residential areas, admitting that you are scrambling for a solution to a problem that you've created. We know neighbourhood plans like the one for Maruka, Salisbury and Nathan have taken five years to get across the line, and yet we have not seen a sod of soil turned for new residents. Today, we see you announcing a new plan with no real action for Alderley. Are you making these announcements because you need a distraction from the Story Bridge?
Lord Mayor.
Well, it's interesting, that question, because we, we just heard before that apparently, according to Labor councillors, that the solution to homelessness is to do a review of a strategy. That, that's what they put on the table. And to increase a grant that we introduced that Labor never had when they were in office. But the reality is, we've always made it clear that there's so many aspects to the housing challenges, and there needs to be responses on so many fronts, which is exactly what we've been doing. And so, there's, there's some things to be said for reviews, but what's even more important is outcomes and actions. And so, we will continue to review the city plan. We will continue to review all of our programmes to make sure that they are fit for purpose and they're responding to the changing needs of the community. And whether that's in low-medium density, whether it's in higher-density areas, whether it's in different parts of the cities, in suburban renewal precincts, we're doing planning work on a whole range of fronts. Now, we see, time and time again, that virtually all of the planning changes that are put forward in this place are opposed by those opposite. And so, they claim that there's not enough happening, yet they oppose whatever we seem to do. And so, they can be called out on that, because the reality is, councillor Griffiths himself was very active in stirring up community concerns when we did the neighbourhood plan that he referred to. He was trying to convince people that all of the character housing in his area would be destroyed as a result of the plan. Now, that was never, never part of the plan. But he decided to take action to whip people up and to get them concerned unnecessarily, and was now complaining about the planning process that he actively opposed. Now, in the end, I understand that, I think he did vote for it in the end, which was a good outcome, but there was a lot of unnecessary things that happened between the beginning of the process and the end of the process, which caused community angst. And so, we got there in the end. Well, we're, we're hearing about-
Councillor Collier, do not call out. Lord Mayor.
We're hearing about the time it takes under state legislation to change the city plan. That's what we're hearing about. But if Labor councillors had been paying attention, they would know that we now have a fast-track process called the Section 18, is it councillor Adam? The, the new Section 18 process can allow changes to come through in 12 months or less. And we've done that in cases like Stone's Corner. There's a range of other initiatives we're gearing up as well to make sure that planning changes are delivered in a faster manner. But ultimately, the traditional way of doing it was the way that was set up by the state government. Now, who was in charge when that process was set up? It was the Labor Party. And so, we know that there were plans that were proposed by council and then sat on in ministers' offices for months and months and months, delays caused unnecessarily. So, councillor Griffiths, we all want to see more housing delivered. Well, certainly on this side of the chamber, we do. We all want to see the process be faster. We want to be able to adapt and be flexible as conditions change. But we know that more housing is needed right across the city. And that's why we're reviewing suburban areas, the suburban renewal precincts. That's why we're doing the LMR review as well. And I do happen to recall that Labor councillors were very vocal when it came to car parking in places like LMR in the past. And they said that more car parking had to be provided. And that's one of the reasons why nothing is being built in LMR. Because, in fact, we require more car parking to be provided in places like that than any of the surrounding councils around us. Councillors that in fact have little or no public transport are asking for less car parking to be provided in their LMR zones. But we've had Labor councillors arguing for more car parking. And so, you can't have it both ways. You either want more homes to be built, or you want to argue against homes being built. And we're looking at ways that we can enable more homes to be built. And so, we'll continue that process across many different channels.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions councillor Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and my question is to the Chair of the City Planning, Suburban Renewal and Economic Development Committee councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, recently I had the privilege of representing the Lord Mayor at the Ministers' Awards for Urban Design, where council received an award- Awards for Urban Design, where council received an award for our Village Precincts program. Can you please update the chamber on the success of the program and what we can look forward to in its next iteration?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to councillor Wolf for the question. As is often noted in this chamber, Brisbane is Australia's lifestyle capital, and it's great to see the Ministers' Award for Urban Design commend a council program that ensures Brisbane remains the leading lifestyle capital. Having commenced in 2018, the Village Precincts projects have helped create a city of vibrant neighbourhoods by delivering public realm upgrades and urban renewal. With attractiveness, accessibility, amenity and safety as central goals, this program has enhanced more than 20 suburban hubs across Brisbane, including Martha Street at Camp Hill, Railway Parade at Dara, Sue's Corner on Sandgate Road, Aminia Street at Mansfield and Manly Harbour Village. From delivering street furniture to footpath upgrades, creative public art outcomes and everything in between, the Village Precincts projects have ensured that our suburbs reflect the best of their local character and identity. This isn't by chance, Madam Chair, it's a result of this council engaging closely with respective communities and gaining their feedback to make sure the improvements reflect the priorities of the local communities. And that's why, as part of the rationale for providing the commendation, the Ministers' Award for Urban Design noted, and I quote, "The Village Precinct Projects Program demonstrates a strong and sustained commitment to place-based urban renewal, underpinned by meaningful community engagement, embedding core design values and amplifying local voices." A great commendation for sure. We have long engaged in these bottom-up and community-led approaches to planning and the revitalisation of our suburbs, and I'm pleased to say that the latest iteration of the Village Precincts projects, the Better Suburbs Places and Spaces program, does exactly that. The program is well underway so that our neighbourhoods can become even better. I know that in my ward, local residents were excited to give their input on what they would like to see upgraded along Ryan's Road and Robinson Road in Nunda. Helping to inform a concept design, this design was then released for further consultation with 79% of respondents supporting it. As a result, the works that are currently underway are based on the community's local priorities. These include new public open spaces with grass, garden beds and street trees, improved accessibility measures including curb ramps, accessible parking and footpaths, new seating, a drinking fountain, bike racks and bins, and improved pedestrian access with a new crossing. While I'm excited to see the final product in coming months, I'm also keen to see how the BSPS program enhances the areas along Railway Avenue and Clarence Road in councillor Wolf's ward. I know she's very excited about this and has worked closely with the community during this initial community consultation phase, which recently closed. From this, we know that residents want more greenery, communal seating areas, improved footpaths and upgraded lighting, among many other wonderful suggestions. The feedback received will be very helpful in preparing a concept design for further consultation so that the neighbourhood receives fantastic upgrades and additions desired by the community. And though we may not get the credit for it from the councillor for Maruka Ward, locations for upcoming works as part of the BSPS program include Ainsworth Street in Salisbury, aiming to boost this neighbourhood with key upgrades and enhancements. Madam Chair, the Shrinna Council's commitment to our suburbs helps ensure that Brisbane remains the best place to live, work and relax, and we look forward to facilitating even more suburban renewal for the benefit of residents. Thank you.
That now ends question times. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 25th of August 2025.
Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 25th of August 2025 be adopted.
Seconded. Has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 25th of August 2025 be adopted. Point of order. Point of order, councillor Collier.
Chair, can I ask that clause A be taken, sereatum, for debate?
Seconded. For debate and voting. So, Lord Mayor, sorry, that has been, yeah, it's for voting and, yep, debate. So, Lord Mayor, can you please talk on item A?
Point of order, Chair, sorry, just to clarify, it was just clause A, sereatum, for debate only.
Yeah, so when we debate it separately, it has to be voted then, so debate and voting. Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I go on to the items ahead of us, thank you councillor Parry for that wonderful response, that calm, measured response to what was a question designed to further inflame the divide within our community. It is something that makes me so proud to lead a team that has so many members that are committed to the health, the good future, the harmony of our community. And there are other people sadly in this chamber that are just interested in dividing people, and that's not a good thing. There are other people that don't seem to acknowledge that extremism happens on both the left and the right, and they only seem to think it happens on the right. I guess you would think that when you're actually part of the extreme on the left, you only think that everyone else is wrong. And so, when it comes to what happened on the weekend, we don't want to see either right-wing or left-wing extremism grow in this city. And like councillor Parry, I spent my weekend at multicultural events, and whether it was the Korean festival on Saturday morning, or the wonderful multicultural festival at Newmarket organised by Jeannie Mock and her team after that, or the Sri Lankan festival on Sunday, these are things that bring us together, they celebrate the multicultural nature of our community, they celebrate migrants, and as councillor Parry pointed out, you know, more than 30% of people in Brisbane were born overseas, including some people in this room. And that is something that we should celebrate. We should reject extremism on both the left and the right, and we should also be alert and wise to the words that were issued by the head of ASIO. Now, this is a person who, his job it is to make sure that the elements of extremism in our community are resisted. And so, we saw on the 11th of August last year, ASIO boss Mike Burgess said that inflamed language by politicians can lead to violence. Now, this is not a politician saying this.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, I move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move a motion, and that is that council calls on the Lord Mayor and LNP councillors to apologise for engaging in discriminatory behaviour by directing council to restrict library access to groups that they do not agree with as determined by QCAT in August, and ensure that it does not happen again.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 17 against.
That is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats.
Thank you. What councillor Johnston was referring to was the extremist group Extinction Rebellion. And we resisted that group meeting in our libraries to plan illegal activities. And so, that is something that I absolutely stand by.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnston, do not call out across the chamber. Lord Mayor.
That is something I absolutely stand by. And the state government, and state governments right around the country, and in fact governments around the world, took quick and decisive action to deal with the illegal, harmful and disruptive activities of Extinction Rebellion, so much so that Extinction Rebellion, if it even exists anymore, has now announced that they're not going to use disruptive tactics anymore. And so, that's a good thing, but it certainly wasn't the case when we stood up against that kind of extremism, and rightly, I believe, said no to them planning illegal activities in our libraries. And so, this is all part of...
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I draw your attention to the councillor code of conduct, which makes it unsuitable meeting behaviour to engage in disrespectful actions towards members of the public. Court in Queensland has found that these groups did not engage in illegal behaviour in the library and that they were discriminated against.
You're not to debate, but it is not a point of order. I do not uphold your point of order. If you have something to say, you can do so when it's your turn. It is not a point of order.
Well, how would you know when you don't listen to it?
Councillor Johnston, you're getting up and you're debating and speaking. And I do not uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor, and I caution you as well for debating me and yelling out across the chamber, and I will formally warn you if I have to speak to you again.
Yeah, 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 then I'll see you in court.
One moment, Lord Mayor, can you turn off your mic? Councillor Johnston, as you continue to fail to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, in accordance with section 21/8 of the meeting's local law 2001, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of the meeting. Councillor?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I move dissent in your ruling.
I second it.
Has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey, dissent in my ruling. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Massey and seconded by councillor Johnston. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 16 against.
That is lost. Councillors, resume your seats. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I move that you have engaged in unsuitable meeting behaviour by applying the meeting's local law in a discriminatory way against me and other councillors in this place.
Seconded. A motion of unsuitable meeting conduct of the Chair has been moved by councillor Johnston and I believe seconded by councillor Collier. I'll now vacate the Chair and leave the chamber.
Yes. Thank you. I rise to speak on the motion of unsuitable meeting conduct against the Chair councillor Sandy Landers. And I want to put on the record first of all that this is the official process that has been put down to raise these issues in the chamber. Councillor Wines will get up and dribble out the, oh, it's terrible, we don't want to do this, but this is the process that he voted for and the LNP. Today, we've seen an excellent example of the bias and discrimination of the Chair of Council councillor Sandy Landers. Today, she has done three or four things. One, she has engaged in cautioning some councillors. She cautioned myself, she cautioned councillor Collier, and she has cautioned councillor...
Caution strongly, Lord.
Sorry, you got cautioned first. And cautioned councillor Massey. After that, councillor Landers then warned councillor Massey, and councillor Collier has been cautioned a second time. I have not been warned today. Instead, the Chair of Council, as she does week after week, does not engage in the step that is necessary, which is to warn a councillor before they are noted in the minutes. Instead, councillor Sandy Landers goes straight to noting my conduct in the minutes. She does that even though my behaviour is no different to any other councillor in this place, but the way in which we are treated is completely different. So why is it one councillor is warned when they call out across the chamber and another councillor is put straight into the minutes for calling out across the chamber? Now, the only reason that I'm standing up and doing this today is because we can see that the Chair of Council will not even listen to a point of order. I stood today on a serious point of order about the Lord Mayor's unsuitable meeting behaviour in not recognising the outcome of a Queensland court case, which found against Brisbane City Council that he personally supported. The Lord Mayor has said on the record today he does not recognise that court's decision that this council engaged in discrimination, discrimination that was led by the Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrinna, and supported by the then LNP councillors. Now, bias and discrimination in the chairing of this council meeting is unacceptable. We know why councillor Landers is doing this, because last week, what she did was to tell me she was going to move a motion, which councillor Wong then dutifully moved, saying that I had engaged in three acts of unsuitable meeting conduct. Now, these acts have been manufactured without warnings. These acts are the same behaviour that the LNP is not even cautioned for. The LNP will call out and they are not even cautioned. The ALP get cautions, occasionally warnings, councillor Massey gets cautions and warnings, and I don't get any warnings at all. And the reason the LNP is doing this is so that they can then use their own bad behaviour to refer me to the OIA for the three breaches of the rules within a year. Now, I don't know if the CEO of council who's sitting here today has already done this and whether she's had the advice back from the OIA yet or not about the LNP's... and whether she's had the advice back from the OIA yet or not about the LNP's appalling behaviour last week, which also was discriminatory and unlawful, not that this Lord Mayor would recognise that, because you cannot refer the same complaints over and over again to the OIA. So of course, here we are today with the LNP manufacturing the reasons for me to be noted in the minutes, not warned like councillor Massey or other councillors. And this, what happened two weeks ago, there's no warning, I'm just noted in the minutes. Now, this is discrimination, flat out. It is unsuitable meeting conduct by the Chair of Council, who is not acting fairly, not acting respectfully, and not following the meeting's local laws. The only reason to note someone in the minutes without a warning is if they engage in the worst kind of possible conduct in this chamber. Now, calling someone a piece of shit is not the worst possible conduct in this behaviour. Calling someone a groin rub is not the worst possible behaviour. Swearing at me last week, as councillor Toomey does, not even warned, not even warned, not even cautioned. So swearing at me while I'm speaking, that's acceptable behaviour. Me saying, hang on, I'm trying to make a point of order, doesn't seem like the worst kind of behaviour you can have in this place. Not even, yeah, not even cautioned for that. And, you know, the legal advice that I've got, because this is like fifteen years of this, is...
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further debate. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Once again, again, in the third week in a row, councillor Johnston has brought this matter, a matter similar to this, against councillor Landers. And once again, councillor Landers, in my view, handled this scenario exactly right. And the part of this, that, the part of councillor Johnston's argument that sort of stuck with me quite a bit is her view that she behaves no different to anyone else. And I don't think a fair-minded person would accept that. I don't think a fair-minded person would say that her behaviour is consistent with all other councillors here. My view is that councillor Johnston does push the envelope further than everybody else and that she does challenge the Chair more than everybody else. And oftentimes, those challenges on the Chair are unfair, which is what often leads us to this, to this point. And once again, I think today we saw in what appeared to be councillor Johnston's, from my, from my perspective here, an energetic defence of the rights of Extinction Rebellion to use ratepayer facilities to plan community disruption for their cause. Now, I don't agree with Extinction Rebellion, I don't agree with extremism, I don't agree with using ratepayer facilities for, for the planning of disruptive acts that are outside of the rules, that are outside of the law, I don't agree with that. I noted with interest the article that spoke to that in the newspaper that reported on that matter, that said that merely because not all of Extinction Rebellion's activities were illegal, therefore sometimes they could use our facility, was effectively the argument made, and I didn't agree with that. Councillor Johnston, in her attempts to call other people discriminatory, has, in my view, gone a little bit further than what was appropriate and councillor Landers clearly shared that view by noting councillor Johnston in the minutes. But once again, councillor Landers has a range of rules at her disposal, but the idea that councillor Johnston is just another councillor behaving just as everybody else does is not true, in my opinion. And that we have to do this week after week is evidence of that, that, not that there's a conspiracy against councillor Johnston, but rather there's a conspiracy by councillor Johnston against everyone else, including councillor Landers. Again, in my opinion. So, and the evidence for that is that the listing of things, the clear records that councillor Johnston keeps, is to make, to make accusations of other people, not to defend her position, but to accuse others of wrongdoing. And that, I think, is really disappointing. And like, as I say, I think that in the circumstances that councillor Landers finds herself in, I think a fair-minded person would understand the decisions she's made, support the decisions she's made, and see them as largely rational decisions in an attempt to keep order in this place and also do the most important, the most, the single most important thing the Chair does here is ensure the business of council occurs. That's their principal objective, to ensure that the agenda proceeds. The fact that we have to have these discussions flies in the face of that one particular attitude, which is to get the business of the day complete. And once again, for the third week in a row, we see what, in my opinion, would appear to be a largely vexatious attack by councillor Johnston on councillor Landers, gums up the meeting, distracts us from the purpose of what this council is set here to do, and brings us to largely hair-splitting legalistic arguments about what the words actually say rather than what we are here to do, which is of course advance the interests of all residents of our city, which I think is largely, the fact that we have to do this again, pretty disappointing, pretty disappointing. So as I say, unsurprisingly, I continue to support councillor Landers. I think as a person who has held that position, I know how difficult it is, and I think that she's handled herself today in particular very, very well. And as a result of this discussion, I'd also like to move that this motion now be put.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Wines, seconded by councillor Dixon. That is motion to be put. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
A division called by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Griffiths. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clerk, please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being sixteen in favour and seven against.
The motion to put the motion is carried. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillor Johnston, your right of reply.
Yes. Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair, and I note that, again, councillor Wines has stood up as the Praetorian Guard for the LNP and guillotined this motion. He has never allowed a debate on the unsuitable meeting conduct of the Chair of Council. And I know that there are numerous other councillors here who have concerns about how she is chairing the meeting, but he refuses to allow proper debate. I'm going to put this on the record. This is what the rules say. This is section 21/2 of the meeting's local law. If the Chair decides that unsuitable meeting conduct has occurred, the Chair may consider the severity of the conduct and whether the councillor has any previous warnings for unsuitable meeting conduct issued in a meeting. I had not been warned for any behaviour in this meeting. In fact, when councillor Landers noted my behaviour in the meeting, she did not say what it was for. There was no indication of what the unsuitable meeting conduct was. The meeting rules go on to say, if the Chair decides conduct is of a serious nature or another warning is warranted, so another warning can be given, remember, I haven't had any warning, the Chair may make an order under 21/8, which is what she did. Now, what is serious, what is serious nature of the issue? Well, it's not calling someone a piece of shit, it's not calling someone a groin rub, it's not swearing at someone and saying it's bullshit, because that is what councillor Toomey did to me last week. It's not councillor MacKay.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Yeah, point of order, councillor Wines.
Can I just seek a ruling? I appreciate that councillor Johnston is quoting other people, but can you just seek a ruling on whether it's legitimate to repeat the language, even though, even though the councillor, look, I appreciate that the councillor's quoting, I appreciate the councillor's quoting and not saying it herself, but perhaps could I just seek a ruling on whether it's appropriate and whether it should be implied rather than stated?
Councillor Johnston, I prefer you are not directly quoting those words, just put it in the right context. Please continue.
I think it's in the right context, Mr Chair, because we're talking about what is a serious breach of the meeting's law and what isn't. And those are the things that this Chair does not consider to be serious and does not consider even to be a breach of the rules. And let me go on. Councillor Wines using the word Lord Mayor, councillor Collier using the word Lord Mayor, ah, sorry, using the word lies, councillor Collier using the word lies, councillor Adams using the word lies, but guess who got breached under 21/8 last week for using the word lies? That would be me! And it's okay when other councillors do it, but it's not when I do. Now, the rules go on, so remember, if it's of a serious nature. Now, those things I've outlined today weren't even considered to be a breach of the rules. Me making a point of order, not being allowed to make my point of order because the Chair just interrupts and says it's not a point of order without listening to me, how she can make a ruling without listening is the fundamental question. But there was no warning, there was no warning whatsoever. So this is not a serious matter. And if the Chair decides unsuitable meeting conduct has occurred, her options under section, subsection four are to give a councillor a warning or request that they cease the unsuitable meeting conduct, apologise for their comment, conduct, or withdraw their comments. So none of these preliminary rules are ever used with respect to me. Week after week, councillor Sandy Landers goes straight to section 21/8, which is for the most serious behaviour, not swearing, not turning your back to someone, some people using the word lies, not other people, all of these things that other people do in this chamber, which are allowed. If I even blink the wrong way, I don't get a warning, I get put in the minutes under section 21/8, which is an abuse of councillor Sandy Landers' powers. How can we correct behaviour when the Chair of Council does not issue a warning saying what the unsuitable meeting conduct is? That is the purpose of these rules, that is what councillor Sandy Landers refuses to do. And we've seen how it operates on this side of the chamber in the first hour of this meeting. Cautions for some people, warnings for some people, straight into the minutes for other people. Now, this is unsuitable meeting conduct, because if calling someone a groin rub is acceptable behaviour, if swearing at another councillor while they're speaking is acceptable behaviour, if calling, turning their back to a councillor week after week while they're speaking in the chamber is acceptable behaviour, these are all things that the Chair of this council thinks are appropriate. But me, me, interjecting is apparently the most serious conduct, that's all I did, interjected. I didn't swear, I didn't say anything else, I made a point of order. That is the most serious conduct and that is why I've been noted in the minutes today. That's two in the last couple of weeks.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. I'll now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Collier. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and sixteen against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please return to your seats. And can someone advise the Chair to come back to the chamber? Madam Chair, the chamber decided you have not engaged in unsuitable meeting conduct. Please return to your chair.
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was just talking about the importance of resisting extremism on both sides, the left and the right. And then we had councillor Johnston jump and make stirring defence of the Extinction Rebellion group, who wanted to use our libraries.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Lord Mayor.
Who wanted to use our libraries as part of the work that they were doing at the time to plan illegal activities, to train people in how to conduct illegal activities. And so at the time, there was a council motion that was put forward and voted on by this chamber to not allow Extinction Rebellion to meet in our libraries because of their role in planning illegal activities. Now, many years have gone by and this matter was considered by QCAT, the tribunal. And the tribunal has asked us to change our approach and we have changed our approach. Of course, we comply with the tribunal, but I don't agree. I don't agree. Because the fundamental basis that was claimed by the tribunal is that we're somehow discriminating based on someone's political views. It was never about their political views, it was always about illegal activity that was being planned. Now, I don't agree with the political views of the Greens' political party, yet they're allowed to meet in our libraries, and I don't propose that they not be allowed to meet in our libraries. And so as much as I disagree with the Greens' political party, I'm happy for them to meet in our libraries. We don't take action when they set up political tents in our parks. And so this is never about, this was never about someone's political views, it was about illegal activity. But obviously, the tribunal's made their decision, we comply with that decision, I just don't agree with that decision. And so I go back to my original point, which was that the comments made by politicians can lead to violence. And that was the warning from ASIO, the ASIO boss, Mike Burgess. And he says, and I quote, "My message is for everyone, my message is for everyone and the language they use, I get robust political debate, that's got to continue as part of a strong society, but just be careful with your language because, again, inflamed language leads to violence." And so it is something that we must really be conscious of, particularly when we have heightened activity, both on the extremes of the left and the extremes of the right at the moment. Now, when it comes to this activity, we have, as city leaders, the decision to make, is this something that we're going to inflame or something that we're going to try and calm down? And I genuinely believe that we have a role to try and calm it down, not inflame it. Now, I know that not everyone that went to those competing rallies, you know, the one on Story Bridge that we talked about and then the one last Sunday, not everyone are extremists, of course they're not. And we have a right to protest in this, in this country, and that is a good thing, and in this state. But there are some people involved in those protests and rallies that are extremists and that do seek to further inflame violence and hatred. And we have a role, as I said, in calming that down and to bring people together, not to, not to stifle debate or stop protests, but to make sure that we can all be safe in our community and that the law is adhered to. And those laws exist for a reason. And so I think that the type of question that was asked of councillor Parry was one, in my mind, that was clearly designed to inflame further division in our community and that, that is not a healthy thing. Madam Chair, as I do, I wanted to talk about the lighting of the assets of City Hall, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Kangaroo Point Bridge and Redcliffe Place. And last night, those assets were green and gold because of National Wattle Day. And I see a number of councillors are wearing their National Wattle badge. I've got one that I normally wear, but left it at home today, unfortunately. But it's been great to see the Brisbane Wattle in flower recently and it's a reminder... And it's a reminder of where our national colours come from. The green and the gold are the colours of the wattle. Tonight, the Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit in red to promote blood, cancer and stem cell awareness, reminding the community of the importance of donating stem cells. Meanwhile, the Storybridge will be lit purple, green and white to support Body Image and Eating Disorders Awareness Week. Obviously, a critical challenge in our community, and one that seems to be becoming more and more of a challenge, and one that we rightly support awareness for. Tomorrow, the assets will be lit up in purple to support Jean Hale's National Women's Health Week, and also red to support Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. On Thursday, the Storybridge will be lit in orange, pink and green to support Big Sound, councillor Howard. The Kangaroo Point Bridge will be lit in red and white to support Polycystic Kidney Disease Awareness Week. And the Victoria Bridge will be lit in purple to support The View Club's sixty-fifth birthday. On Friday and Saturday, our assets will be lit in pink because it is Riverfire and the start of River Festival.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair.
Seconded has been moved for an extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those against, no. The eyes have it, Lord Mayor.
Did I say River Festival? I meant Brisbane Festival. And so, we have the launch of Brisbane Festival on Friday, and then we have Riverfire on Saturday. Finally, on Sunday, our assets will be lit in blue, green and gold to celebrate the Independence Day of Brazil. And this marks two hundred and three years since the end of Portuguese rule on the seventh of September eighteen twenty-two. I also wanted to let everyone know that applications are now open for the twenty-twenty-six Lord Mayor's Women in Business Grants Programme. There's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding available for women-led businesses across our suburbs that can apply for individual grants of up to five thousand dollars. These grants can be used to invest in essential equipment, in training, in education or professional services that help businesses grow. This particular programme was an outcome of the Women in Business Lunch Series that I have been holding for a number of years now, together with Nina and also members of my team. Thank you for the involvement in those lunch series, because there's been a lot of great feedback coming through from women in business about how we can do more to get more women in business, and also to support women in business to grow and achieve their full potential. Since we first launched the Women in Business Grants Programme, the initiative has provided more than a million dollars in funding to two hundred and eleven local businesses, and supported the creation of four hundred and forty-six new jobs. And the impact of the grant is being felt by past recipients. And there's so many great stories to tell, some of which Beadie has been showcasing recently of how we've seen women involved in not only receiving the grant, but also the programme that comes with it, have really used it to leverage the opportunities available, and to grow their business and to get some wonderful results. I want to thank the Queensland Police Service for their swift response to the disturbing incident that occurred on one of our buses a few weeks back. And last week, you would have seen in the media, an offender pleaded guilty to assault on one of our bus drivers. He received a six-month suspended sentence, which means that he'll not spend a day in custody for this crime, and the only requirement is that he does not offend again in that period. Now, that's a sentence that's at the lower range of what's available, but the police prosecutor said in the submissions, and I quote, "The bus driver is performing a public function, one that is relatively thankless, even though we do make a habit in Brisbane of thanking the drivers, and as we should. It is aggravating that he has, as part of his work or function, been assaulted." Now, this is a point that we've made previously on a number of times, that if you assault a police officer or someone from the Queensland Ambulance Service, there is strict penalties for that. But if you assault a bus driver, not necessarily the case. And I think that bus drivers perform a frontline service that keeps our city moving, it's an essential public service. And I again call on the state government to consider giving additional protections to bus drivers, so that it's a further deterrent to assaults occurring. Now, we have just received some good news in recent weeks that the state government is putting more money into driver protection barriers, but there's other forms of protection that can help as well, including stricter laws when it comes to assaults on bus drivers. And I think that's something that also needs to be considered. I also want to acknowledge the retirement of an incredible and long-serving council officer, with the retirement of general manager of news, Brad Wilson. Brad has worked in a number of roles within council across a wide breadth of portfolios, under many different Lord Mayors and Chairs, from planning to city standards to natural environment. He's always done so with professionalism, and I know everyone's always enjoyed working with him and appreciated his professionalism and his expertise, and the passion for Brisbane that he's always brought to the role. And I'd like to personally thank, and I know on behalf of my team as well, Brad Wilson for his many years of service to the council, but more importantly, to the people of Brisbane, because we are all better off for his service. I want to wish him and his family a happy retirement, and we know that the next chapter of his life will be fulfilling, just as we've seen the time at council, no doubt, be fulfilling as well. So best wishes for Brad Wilson. Moving to item A, the Alderley Centre Suburban Renewal Precinct Plan. Now, this is the fourth precinct plan that we've introduced under our suburban renewal programme. And as I mentioned before, it's important that we look for opportunities right across Brisbane to accommodate more housing. It is clear that we have a housing shortage, both in Brisbane, in the surrounding councils and right across Queensland. And as clear as a housing shortage across Australia as well. Now, we saw Labor councillors trying to play politics and trying to suggest that somehow this council is responsible for the housing shortage in Australia, whereas they've spent much of the past decade trying to criticise us for being too pro-development. So, you know, go figure. But the reality is, we know we need to do more, we are doing more. This is one of the many things that we're doing. And Alderley is also important in that it obviously has great access to public transport with the rail line. And this is something where we know that more homes can be accommodated. We also know it's a key centre that could benefit from some investment and renewal as well, because we've seen great examples of where that's happened, where the private sector's invested to build new homes and new businesses, and those areas become really thriving pockets. Alderley's a fantastic area, and we believe it can be even better. And so, this is something we're putting forward. It's focused on boosting housing options, improving transport access, supporting the local economy, economy and revitalising underutilised land. The focus area spans from South Pine Road and Inogra Road corridor, from Railway Street to Moran Street, bringing it close, in close proximity to the rail station. And it's only five and a half kilometres from the city centre as well. It's got high levels of amenity and services in the area, and it's a prime example of a vibrant mixed-use destination that can offer greater housing supply and choice. This item will see a precinct plan formally launched, deciding, deciding to prepare the relevant amendments to the city plan and enabling a request to the state government for a streamlined amendment process. Once again, this is something that I referred to before, where instead of the many years that it would take in the past to update the planning scheme, we're going for a fast-tracked process here, while also doing all the relevant planning work and the appropriate consultation as well. So I commend this particular item to the chamber, and I believe this can be part of a multi-pronged response to boosting housing supply.
Councillor Johnston, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, Madam Chairman, the Lord Mayor said that I engaged in a, quote, "stirring defence of extinction rebellion." In my speech earlier today, I called on the Lord Mayor to apologise for his discriminatory conduct in relation to the leasing of our council libraries. I did not mention any group in particular.
Further speakers?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
Madam Chair, over the past three weeks, you've not given me a question. And in fact, there have been three Greens' questions, which means that the last Greens' question really should have come to me, because you generally do go in order. So, Madam Chairman, I'm just wondering why today, or on the twenty-sixth, or the nineteenth, that you've not given me the opportunity to ask a question, despite the Greens being given three questions?
Councillor, I do monitor it very, very closely, and it is, it is on the record, the different questions, but this is something that perhaps should have been raised during question time, but I do, you know, once we run out of time, we run out of time, councillor. And I do monitor it very closely to make sure it is fair.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I stood up at every opportunity during question time today, and you did not give me the call. You have given the call to the Greens' councillors beyond their allocation and not to me. Madam Chairman, why are you engaging in discriminatory conduct and not asking me to, not giving me the opportunity to answer a question?
Councillor Johnston, I, I actually am monitoring it, and it was Greens' turn to do that. And, you know, if we don't get to further questions, then, you know, next week. So I will continue with item A, please councillors, and councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair, and I rise to speak to clause A, amendments to Brisbane City Plan twenty-fourteen for Alderley Centre Suburban Renewal Precinct Plan. And what we are being asked to vote on today is a document produced by this Brisbane LNP regime to appear like they're tackling the housing crisis. But once again, it is all talk and no action. It is in fact Groundhog Day in this chamber. We have heard the LNP talk ad nauseam about neighbourhood plans in Stones Corner, Winham and Mount Gravat, all of which this side of the chamber, Labor councillors have supported. But what we take issue with is that they are all going nowhere fast, especially the Nathan Salisbury Maruka neighbourhood plan, which is now six years in the making and nothing has happened, not a single sod turned since it has been approved. At least with Alderley here, the LNP Brains Trust figured out that it's good to have these done near existing infrastructure for rail and bus route travel options. Otherwise, everything this LNP council does is sheerly for optics. People can see money that they put into marketing, advertising, public relations, glossy flyers, but people cannot see any benefits out of all of this. The people of Brisbane don't have confidence that this LNP council can unlock the homes, the infrastructure, utilities, community services and public transport options needed to accommodate for growth. What we want to know is what is this LNP council doing right now to ease the housing crisis in Brisbane? This morning, we learned all about council spending and eye-watering five hundred and sixty-eight million dollars on the Adelaide Street Tunnel. That is two point eight million dollars a metre on a tunnel, while homes are unaffordable and homeless people get evicted from council parks with nowhere to go. Maybe this LNP Lord Mayor and his council's obsession with white elephant projects is why they say we can't afford to do more for housing and homelessness in Brisbane. The LNP have been running Brisbane for twenty-one years now, and what do we have to show for it? Residents born and raised in Brisbane now forced to settle elsewhere because they've been priced out of their own hometown. Frontline public service workers now travelling more than an hour and a half to work each day because they can't afford to live here, a city that we all know and love. A congestion crisis fuelled by the LNP's botched bus network reviews that leave our suburbs completely disconnected. Just yesterday, on ABC mornings, we heard from a chief economist from PRD Nationwide saying Brisbane's getting half of the amount of units being approved as Melbourne, but Brisbane's market for units is stronger than Melbourne. It should be the other way around. Planning schemes and development applications are particularly difficult in Brisbane. That is what you get when you have a stale, twenty-one-year-old LNP council, completely out of ideas and totally stuck in their ways. On this side of the chamber, we will not stand in the way of housing, it's critical that supply meets demand. We won't be accepting any more LNP excuses, though. It's time to get homes built, it's time to turn these neighbourhood plans into real outcomes and unlock more opportunities to live, work and play in Brisbane.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I rise to speak on item A, the Alderley Centre Suburban Renewal Precinct Plan. For those in the chamber who are aware of the suburban renewal precinct plans, they're all about unlocking new housing and creating economic opportunities within very focused areas. As opposed to the neighbourhood planning process, which covers multiple suburbs, these tend to be very focused in a single suburb. Now, the advantage of this is we can arrange for a much quicker turnaround of the city plan changes, and that's very much about identifying an opportunity, moving in, doing the analysis, and then working with the state government to bring those plans to fruition. So, as the Lord Mayor indicated, this is number four in the series. Stones Corner is near completion, and that'll bring on twenty-three hundred additional homes in that area. Winham and Mount Gravat to follow, and they will also be bringing on additional housing. Alderley, as the Lord Mayor suggested, is a unique spot, near a train station, it's got a lot of great amenity there, it's got a lot of key benefits, it's got a large-scale supermarket there, and there's just an opportunity to move in there and have a close look at what can be done to reinvigorate that particular location. It is close to the city centre, but it's got a lot of benefits around it. So just outside of the precinct boundaries, we've got Sedgley Park, we've got the New Market Olympic Pool, and we've got Bank Street Reserve not too far away. So, you know, looking in that precinct, the study precinct and the surrounding area, there's a lot to be said for that, and certainly an opportunity to revitalise it. Now, the particular amendment, this is the very start of the process, what we're seeking is the chamber's support to approach the state government to allow us to progress this amendment, to go through the public consultation process, to seek the state interest review, and it'll come back to the chamber again. But in the first instance, we need the state government's support to follow the section eighteen process. It'll then roll into consultation and a draft plan will be prepared. Now, just to address some of the points that councillor Collier made, I just thought those were pretty, they just smacked of naivety, you know, completely ignorant to what's happening in the market here in Brisbane. We have years of housing supply available in city plan, we are continuing to add to that pool of latent supply. We are doing that at the rate of thousands and thousands of homes a year. And in fact, we're approving over eleven thousand nine hundred new homes every year. But unless you're living under a rock, everybody knows the problem is productivity. You can pick up any newspaper around the country, and they will talk about the challenges of building in Brisbane. And guess who's behind that? Councillor Collier's mates at the CFMEU. She is, she and her union buddies are at the very crux, are at...
Councillor Allen, wait. Do not call out councillors. Councillor Allen.
So, the problem we have in Brisbane isn't one about planning, it isn't one about approving DA's, it's not one about bringing on latent supply, it's about being able to deliver the product on the ground once we approve it. And guess who's holding that up? It's over every newspaper, people know it, the industry knows it, the state government's moving with their productivity commission to have a close look at the construction industry. So I think that councillor Collier needs to be a little bit more circumspect, if you like, about what she says, because in this particular instance, she is way off the mark, and it's showing, and I think that she...
Point of order councillor Kim.
Will councillor Adams take a...
Will Counselor Adams take a question? Counselor Allen Adams take a question?
Counselor Allen, will you take a question?
No, I won't.
No, Counselor Kim, he won't. Counselor Allen.
Okay.
Counselors?
Well, it is a shame, isn't it, that I didn't take the question? But if the question was going, but if the question was going to come from somebody with as much knowledge of the construction industry as Counselor Collier, it probably wasn't a question worth taking. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Counselor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on Item A. And while I'm here, can I please move that Item C is taken in Surrey, Adam, for voting? Firstly, I'm just, I'm just going to reply back to that, just very quickly. And I'm going to say that the people that are building our city should be thanked. The people that are building our homes should be thanked. They're building our roads, they're building our businesses, and those are a part of this city. There are homeowners, renters, residents that pay rents, and they should actually be thanked for the work that they're doing. What we do know, however, is that many of the policies here within chambers have failed. We know the TLPI has undeniably failed. And I'll say that over and over and over again, as I called it out when it was initially a Brisbane City Council plan in 2023. Nonetheless, I'll continue on to Item A. The proposal amended for the precinct plan in Alderley, which is important to note. And I talk about this because, of course, I grew up just down the road. And I still visit my parents quite often in Stafford. And I have to go through Alderley, this part, actually. Look, Alderley is a leafy north Brisbane suburb that doesn't really fit the other suburbs, but it's closer to the inner suburbs at about seven kilometres from the central business district. And it's a blend of that kind of traditional Queenslanders with much newer developments, including townhouses. And something really important to note about it is that currently this area has been designated as a district centre under the city plan. Obviously, the focus of that D1 allocation was specifically to increase businesses rather than residential. And what we're seeing in this amendment is that shift to focusing more on the residential and the mixed-use development outcome. And do you know what? It is true. It's got good public transport outcomes, like not just the train station. It's well serviced by really important buses in the area that are high frequent, that have high frequency, like the 345, the 360 and the night-time 345, which in my younger days, I used to catch quite a bit. However, again, you know, after many of these, and we do understand that this is at the start of this. We had this same first moment with the Stones Corner plan, where there's absolutely no information in the documentation. And so we've kind of come to a point to respect this now. And recognising that there is no detail, but we are working on approving this to go for a tailored amendment to try to speed it up through state government, I thought it was important to just put a couple of things on the record, which is while it does have really good public transport outcomes, and it is around some great green spaces, it's important, really important. And I know that there is consultation, that the residents of Alderley and the surrounds do get that opportunity for consultation for this. Secondly, I just want to highlight the active transport corridors between here. There is a primary cycle route running further down at the former roundabout, which is now the intersection on South Pine Road. And that's a primary route that goes northwards. And then at the eastern border of the precinct, that's also the primary route. There's a second route, secondary route, that goes through the gut of the future precinct. The reason why it's important to mention this is that area is completely unsafe for active travel, completely disconnected from protective cycleways, even though there is a little bit more cover once you get to the Rovin Wood Reserve, from memory. And so it's just important to highlight these kind of stuff because this should be a part of the plan. Apart from delivering this, while there are good amenities like pools, we need to think about libraries, we need to think about other community facilities that will enable to enhance the future lives of residents in this area, noting that it's kind of impossible to imagine that this council doesn't actually already have an idea of how high the density will go. Nonetheless, while there are challenges, we are supportive, as the Greens, to this precinct plan. We think it's in a good area. And I think it's just important to get a couple of those things on the record. We'd like to see a precinct plan be successful and actually deliver housing. Maybe this one will be the one.
Counselor Massey, your time's expired. Any further speakers?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Counselor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I move that you have engaged in unsuitable meeting time by failing to comply with Section 33 of the Meetings Local Law regarding question time.
Counselor Johnston, just to be clear, you are moving unsuitable meeting conduct. A motion about unsuitable meeting conduct of the Chair has been moved by Counselor Johnston and seconded by Counselor Massey. I'll now vacate the Chair and leave the chamber.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes. The Meetings Local Law under Section 33 requires, Section 33, subsection 3, the Chair must allocate questions alternatively, first to the majority councillors and then to the minority councillors. I am one of the minority councillors. The Chair of Council has a statutory obligation to act, to observe and enforce the Meetings Local Law, and she has a positive obligation under the Code of Conduct to act fairly towards all councillors and also ensure that all uplaws are upheld. Now, I've had the chance to check the minutes from the last four weeks. And this week, I was not asked for a question. The Greens had a question, and the LNP and Labour had a question. On the 26th, the Greens had a question, the LNP and Labour had a question. On the 19th, the Greens had a question, the ALP and the LNP had a question. On the 12th, the Greens had a question, the ALP and the LNP had a question. The last question I had was one month ago, on the 5th of August. Now, the way in which questions are allocated in this place is that they are allocated on a pro-rata basis, and normally it goes from side to side. And then either an ALP councillor or a Greens councillor or myself are called. For the past four weeks, the Chair has not called me for a question. And I have stood up every single time our side has had the opportunity to ask a question, and yet the Chair has not called upon me. In the time that I have been here, the Greens, who have two, which is great, they usually get two questions, then I get one, they've had four questions and I have had zero. This is discriminatory behaviour by the Chair of Council, who is deliberately not allowing me to speak. That is the outcome of not being allowed to ask a question. You are not allowed to speak. When I make a point of order, I'm not allowed to speak and make my point of order before she jumps down my throat and says it's not a point of order. I'm not allowed to ask a question because the Chair says she monitors it closely. But unfortunately, not closely enough because she's been engaging in discriminatory behaviour for the past month by not allowing me to ask a question. Now, again, Counselor Wines will get up and say, oh, Counselor Johnston, she's terrible. But under the rules of this place, I am entitled to ask a question. Section 33 of the Meetings Local Law outlines the basis upon which I can do so. The person responsible for managing the rules refuses to allow me to ask a question. And when I object, I am then noted in the minutes and referred off to the OIA. That has been going on since Counselor Sandy Landis started in the Chair 18 months ago, and the behaviour by previous Chairs has been going on for 15 years. Now, it is not acceptable that the Chair of Council is not following the Meetings Local Law. They are there for her to observe and enforce, and she is not doing that. And the reason she's not doing that is to stop me from speaking. That can be the only reason. It's not a mistake, or she would have said, oh, I'm so sorry, Counselor, I've made a mistake. I'll correct it next week. I probably would have accepted that. But no, she monitors it very closely, and I'm wrong. Well, I've checked the minutes. Four weeks in a row with no question. And that is the only reason that you can be prevented from asking a question is because they don't want to let you ask. Now, Counselor Wines stands up and says, I disrupt the meeting. Well, Counselor Wines, I stood all through question time this week, last week, the week before and the week before that, trying to ask a question, as is my entitlement under the Meetings Local Law, but the Chair of Council refused to allow me to do so. Instead, she's engaged in biased and discriminatory behaviour by refusing to allow me to ask a question. Now, that is not acceptable. And before Counselor Wines gets up and engages in a lackluster defence of her and then shuts the meeting down to stop anybody else from speaking, and I can tell you the councillors on this side are just as concerned as me about the regime's dictatorial approach, the way in which Counselor Landis is governing this chamber. It is unreasonable. It is not in accordance with the Meetings Local Law. If it was in accordance with the Meetings Local Law, I would have had the option to have a question probably two weeks ago, if not two weeks ago, at least last week, and today, at least. Thank you, Counselor Massey, at least, I'll take that interjection. At least last week, and today not being asked is outrageous.
Counselor Johnston, your time has expired. Further debate? Counselor Wines?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise once again to defend Counselor Landis from another one of these resolutions, the second one today, the fourth one in three weeks. What can only be described as gratuitous attacks on Counselor Landis' character.
Point of order?
I don't, I don't think that's acceptable language. I would ask him to withdraw.
Well, I don't have your point of order.
Well, the word gratuitous means unnecessarily, unnecessary and extra. Gratuitous criticism, if the councillors would prefer. But the, the point that Counselor Johnston was trying to make is that Counselor Landis is not providing her opportunities to ask questions, or is deliberately ignoring her. That's effectively, that sits at the heart of the accusation level to Counselor Landis. Well, I sit through question time, as do many people in this place, I'd say most, and we see routinely many questions from the opposition side asked. But also routinely in question time, time is consumed on vexatious points of order afforded by Counselor Johnston. Now, if you were a person prone to seeing conspiracies, you may think that Counselor Johnston's vexatious points of order, week in, week out, in question time, followed by this criticism of Counselor Landis saying she didn't have an opportunity to ask a question, is a tactic, a strategy, that Counselor Johnston deliberately interferes with the operation of question time so that opposition councillors don't get as many questions as they should, then using that opportunity to criticise the Chair. That is a logical, that is a logical sequence of events. It may well be happening. But the fact that Counselor Johnston routinely, routinely comes into question time and uses points of order that a fair-minded person would view as vexatious to not allow a full complement of what should be nine questions every week, you know, that should be the minimum, nine questions every week, the fact that vexatious and spurious points of order occur from Counselor Johnston time and again, and now we have an attack on the fact that those questions aren't gotten through, seems, seems a little bit neat, I suppose, in my view. And I think that one can easily see that it's a tactic employed by Counselor Johnston to allow herself to make these accusations of Counselor Landis. I've also been advised that Counselor Johnston was, provided a question on the 19th, so much more recently than her records would indicate. Now, that note has been passed to me. I have not personally inspected the record, but I have no reason to doubt the note that's been passed to me. Therefore, the accusation levelled by Counselor Johnston that she's not, that she's been deliberately excluded and has not had a question in the past four weeks would appear to be not true. Once again, more evidence of the vexatious nature of these accusations on Counselor Landis. So what can I say? But once again, we find ourselves in a scenario where, for the second time today and the fourth time in three weeks, the agenda of the meeting, the business of the council, is slowed because of, I suppose, hair-splitting legalese by Counselor Johnston in a scenario that she is very much part of creating. And I would, I would say to her, through you, Mr. Chair, if she sincerely wants questions, she should allow questions to happen in question time. And I think that would be, I think she would get more questions if she didn't interfere with the operation of question time. That's, I sincerely believe that. And I would ask her to reflect on that thought. Rather than attack me, just reflect on that. So, as I said earlier, this is a place of business. The central point of the Chair is to ensure the agenda of the day occurs and the business of council is considered. And these, as I say, vexatious motions interfere with that. And you can't help but think that's the point of them. But once again, my confidence in Counselor Landis, and I'm sure the majority of councillors support her and do not think the way that she runs question time is unfair. In fact, I think she's very fair and balanced. But once again, we are dealing with these resolutions, and I am firmly of the view that the objective of this meeting is to deal with the business of the meeting. And as a result of that, I will move that this motion now be put.
Seconded.
It's been moved that the motion be put by Counselor Wines, seconded by Counselor Dixon. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those who can say no?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Point of order, Chair?
Point of order, Counselor Dixon?
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
It's been moved by Counselor Dixon, seconded by Counselor Giffney, that the meeting adjourn for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the door have been locked. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
The contrary, no? The ayes have it. Enjoy the afternoon tea. Before the meeting resume, Counselor Johnston, I did some checking on the last week's minutes. In fact, you've been offered a question at the meeting before last week. So the premise of your motion did not exist. I hereby offer you an opportunity to withdraw the motion, if you like.
Well, Mr. Chair, if you would like to debate the motion, I encourage you to come down on the floor, and we will do so.
No, I'm not, Counselor Johnston, I'm not debating it.
Thank you for your contribution in also defending the LNP instead of enforcing the rules.
Yeah, your motion was based on false premise. So if you decide to debate, I'll let you go ahead. But I remind you, there's no privilege in this chamber. Would you like to continue? I'm not debating you, I'm just asking, would you like to continue the motion?
I just need one moment because I don't appreciate it.
Okay, well, write a reply.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Deputy Chair, thank you for your delightful feedback about my apparently defamatory statements. Now, firstly, I want to say the following, that I've had the chance to confer with this side of the chamber in the extensive afternoon tea break that we've had. And everyone here, ALP, Green and myself, are all agreed that the Chair of Council is not handling question time fairly- that the Chair of Council is not handling question time fairly or in accordance with the rules. And I'm going to put several things on the record here. One, councillor Wines may be correct that on the nineteenth I had a question, but that does not mean that the Chair of Council has not fairly followed the rules, and she has not done so. We know that I am missing out on questions. We know the Greens are missing out on questions. We know that the Chair of Council, councillor Landers, stops question time early. The rules under section thirty-three outline that question time should not exceed forty-five minutes. Councillor Landers regularly stops question time well in advance of that to prevent councillors on the opposition side from getting a question. And that should have been the case today. It is being timed, how often she is doing this, and there is four minutes today that councillor Landers could have allowed for question time and chose not to do so because she knew it was my turn for a question. So, Mr Deputy Chair, I'm not being defamatory. I, my motion still stands. The Chair of Council is preventing me from asking questions in accordance with the meeting's local law, as I am entitled to do. She is deliberately cutting question time short when it is an opposition councillor's opportunity to ask a question, whether that's myself, the Greens or the ALP. And that deliberately gives the LMP additional questions or prevents them from answering questions that we ask. Now, four minutes today were available. The maximum time I have to ask the question is two minutes. And we all know councillor Adams would be on her feet within about thirty seconds saying that you've been speaking too long and asking a question. So, two into four leaves plenty of time for a question from me today, and it was not forthcoming. Now, we know that the LMP don't want questions asked. Take Infrastructure Committee today, and thank you councillor Chong Wah for reminding me about councillor Parry's delightful performance today. In this chamber this afternoon, she stood up and said, ask me more local questions! Well, this morning I asked her questions in committee about three local petitions, and she just completely blanked me. No answers, no answers from last week's questions. Just put the motion, wouldn't allow any debate. And if you're sitting there and you're just asking questions and you are completely ignored, I mean, that's the same as what councillor Landers does, which is not allow you to ask a question. So let's be clear, I should have had a question today. That is what should have happened. I am not being given questions fairly and in accordance with the meeting's local law. Councillor Landers is not allowing opposition councillors from Labour and the Greens to ask questions in question time because she is deliberately cutting question time short by four minutes at least on regular occasions so that we do not get questions. That is discriminatory behaviour. Now, we all know if you speak too long, you get cut off. That's the rules. You cannot exceed a certain timeframe. Now, if my two-minute question, which would never happen, went for four minutes, then councillor Landers could have cut me off today. But instead of allowing me to ask the question, she did not do so. And this is what she does to the Greens and to Labour, week after week. It is discriminatory. It is part of their regime's behaviour to stop us from questioning the LMP. And I note that the Lord Mayor, the Deputy Mayor, none of these people can be bothered to be here or participate in this debate. Councillor Wines has set out to deny any other councillor the opportunity to speak. And I'll put on the record very quickly, I didn't make a single point of order in question time today. Councillor Wines was completely wrong. Councillor Collier moved two procedural motions during question time. I did not move a single point of order today in question time. I simply stood up, time and time again, trying to get the call to ask a question, which was due to me this week. Now, councillor Wines can't even be honest in this place about what happened in question time today.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. I now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded. A division called by councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Griffiths. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, voting being six in favour and fourteen against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please return to your seats. Can someone advise the Chair to come back to the chamber? Madam Chair, the chamber has decided you have not engaged in unsuitable meeting conduct. Please return to the Chair.
Further speakers on item A, please. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Look, I rise to speak to item A, which is of course the proposed Alderley Centre Suburban Reuel Plan and the initiation of that, the resolution to go to further consultation and consideration, and also the consideration zone. So, can I say, I really do appreciate the kind words of the suburb of Alderley. It's a wonderful place. Some people have said how they lived near or have driven through it. I myself have lived in it for many years. I live in Newmarket now, but I lived within, actually within these boundaries for some years. And I know the wonderful benefits of living within this area. I can assure all councillors, I was a renter when I lived in this place. But the close proximity, one of the reasons I chose to live within this area is that if you missed the train, there was always a bus coming. And that was something I knew at all times. And Alderley Station and Three, Four, Five provide a huge level of public transport reliability. It's also served by Three Ninety, the Three Six One, among many, many others. It is a place people choose to live because of its convenience and also its wonderful commercial offerings. I must recognise that two key local businesses recently suffered a significant fire, which has, will be causing, which has caused both of them to close, one in the near and one in the future. But very disappointing, they're both wonderful community offerings in our area. But the important thing here is that this zone is a discreet area that is reflective of existing commercial, commercial and low to medium residential areas that are currently zoned for that. But there is increasing interest in the future of this location. Because it sits at a fulcrum point of the, it sits between the northwest through Ferny Grove line and the northwest through, we'll call it Bridgeman Downs alignment, it is a place where it is convenient, it is quick to get places, and people are choosing it. Many people who go to university at QT Kelvin Grove find it extremely convenient. And it's a location where you've got heritage-listed commercial buildings, like Character Commercial, you have long-time businesses, and it's just not quite clicking. And the, and the residential proposals there aren't quite taking either. So, it's important that we go in and we talk about what the community expects of a place like this. Both the Alderley community but the Greater Brisbane community expects a centre like this that sits at the, I suppose, at the three ways of three major roads, two major public transport alignments. What do we expect of a place like that? Right now, outside of this zone, there are development applications for quite, for structures larger than what is proposed on the zone. So, for example, there's a number of light industrial sites in this area which have been converted to, to housing, which I think is an appropriate change. But this also includes the Coles-Alderley site, which while some residents are happy with the outcome, many residents did want to see the two towers that were proposed for that site in 2008. They would have preferred to see them built. It would have provided a great opportunity for growth. There is other opportunities, there are other large sites also held by the Coles-Meyer, we'll call it Coles-Meyer Corporate Collective in this site, that would, if they actually used the land for housing, provide significant residential opportunities rather than car parking, which is what is there now. So it's an area under, that, that like, as I say, sits at a fulcrum point, is very convenient, and truly is a wonderful place. I'm, I love Alderley, I think it's the best. I've lived there for, I've lived there for many, many years. And I understand why people want to live there, and I stand why, understand why more people would want to live there. But this area is quite discreet. It's, and I believe that whatever we find here will be consistent with what people would expect a place such as this to do in a housing and both commercial and residential way, and provide opportunities to try and get a more consistent and reliable business offering on the street level, but also provide choice and opportunity for growth in this area. But also, we are starting to see empty nesters in the Grange and Ashgrove area in particular, looking for higher-quality units but staying in district. And they're looking to Alderley to provide that as well. And so, while this is for Alderley, it is, it actually will serve people beyond this area and the Greater Inugwood and of course, the Greater Northwest as well.
Further speakers on item A. Councillor Griffiths.
Aye. Yes, Madam Chair, and thank you. I rise to speak on item A two, the Alderley Centre Precinct Plan. I suppose I want to start first by saying I believe this is a developer-led planning process, and I am very concerned about it. And I say it's a developer-led planning process because my understanding is it's come at the recommendation of the Better Suburbs Board of Brisbane. In fact, the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Board. And the Better Suburbs Board, for those of you who don't know, is, is a group of people appointed by the mayor or the mayor's office. They're unelected. They get paid over $200,000. They have the responsibility of meeting with developers. Developers go and approach these people who council is paying to meet with them. And then they have the opportunity of having a meeting with our council staff. Developers, this board, and then council staff, in fact, planning staff. And my understanding is over a hundred properties have been discussed by this board. And I have real concerns about it. I have concerns about its operation. I have concerns about what is being discussed with those developers because there doesn't need to be any records with these discussions. In fact, the first time I asked for the minutes of the meetings of these discussions with council officers, I was told, none exist. None exist. I understand that's since been rectified, but I am very, very concerned about this process. I've just been through a five-year process with the Maruka-Solsbury-Nathan Plan. And actually, despite what the Lord Mayor said before, we saved a hundred of 200 character homes that were going to be demolished. We also got a Woolworthers home taken back to character. And we actually got reduced density in the area. The thing we lost out is, we didn't get the infrastructure that comes with putting 20,000 new people into the community. So we didn't get the infrastructure, but we're getting the 20,000 new people. Oh, that's a big tick for the developers. Developers love that because it means they have to pay less and provide less. But it's interesting that here in these notes, and there's scant information on this, scant information. Ensure, and it says here, ensure infrastructure capacity meets potential increased demand. Improve connectivity. So in this LMP area, we're going to provide infrastructure. We're going to do things. But how many people are we talking about with this plan? What's your target? How many extra people do you want to put in this community? Why haven't you included any targets for social and affordable housing? Where are they? Today, the Lord Mayor objected to reviewing the housing strategy and said, we're doing so much, we're doing more than any other council in Australia. You're hand-on, huh? And yet, he won't do strategic things like put affordable housing in plans like this. In fact, the Gabba Plan had it removed. Yeah, had it removed. So no, I have real concerns about this. When I've spoken to the public, and when I've let them know, and I've gone, I'm not scared to go into meetings, 400 residents. When I've gone to those meetings and told them about the Better Suburbs Board, their blood boils. Their blood boils. Because they don't think it's right either. So I don't believe this is the best way of doing planning. I don't think this is the best for our city. I think this is the best outcome.
Councillors, sorry, councillor Griffiths, councillors, if you've got conversations, please take it outside because it's a little bit loud.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think this is the best outcome for developers. And this council is about developers. And at the last, at the bottom of the run, comes the residents. That's what this council's about. And I think people will be making their minds up about what they think of this council and this mayor at the next election.
Further speakers. Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to place my brief remarks in relation to clause A of what we heard from our LMP council planning chair just earlier this morning. We heard him calling councillor Collier naive, which I thought was incredibly disappointing coming from somebody who should be leading with a vision and ideas for our city when homelessness is one of our top issues. And this is coming from the same LMP chair who couldn't provide meeting minutes when meeting with a developer early this year, when our, when us on this side of the chamber had asked for those notes. On top of that as well, today's clause is incredibly important, just as councillor Griffiths had mentioned. It's about ensuring infrastructure capacity meets potential increases in demand. Well, as a councillor of Polara, one of the suburbs that has grown exponentially to the point where even reports couldn't even predict what we see today. This is an example of what Alderley could become. This is an example already where this LMP council has failed to deliver public infrastructure. They like to say that we're anti-development, they like to say that we're anti-housing, except what we really are is on support of residents' side. We want safe infrastructure. We want to house as many people as possible. But one thing to note from this LMP council is a very mysterious donation that I see on the ECQ records in 2017, when Osfield, a major developer in Polara, received, gave $30,000 to the Liberal National Party. This same party right here. For Alderley Centre.
Councillor Kim, I'm speaking. So you don't speak while I am. And I ask you to come back to item A.
Thank you, Chair. I'll come right back to item A, especially where it says, improve connectivity within and to the precinct, including connections to open space and public transport networks. My question to this LMP council is, will they also provide adequate public transport when they're building in this plan? What we see in Polara is they promised two bus stops on Ritchie Road, and that was at the last financial year's budget, and it wasn't committed. It's not delivered, it's delayed. And we have to constantly ask for more information, request for information to find out more progress on this. This isn't what residents deserve, especially when plans like this come through. When you take a look at the Brisbane Sustainable Growth Strategy in 2021, this was their last homelessness strategy. They're addressed to what they're going to do for people in Brisbane who are struggling. Except at the same time, when we met with Nourish Streets from this morning, who provide...
I'm going to ask you a second time to come back to item A.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I will draw this to a very interesting housing stat. So, ten to fifteen new faces are coming every week when, when this group goes out to give food to people who are struggling. In this report, in 2021, it says, 275 new residents are coming to Brisbane every week.
Because I've asked you to not speak over me when I'm talking. And I've also asked you several times to come back to item A, please.
Thank you, Chair. Well, in relation to clause A, there's no social housing, there's no mention of what's important about what our city needs to be leading with right now, addressing some of the key issues. the key issues. We've already reflected on the mistakes of the past, and we're not learning from them. And it's very critical to highlight that today, especially when the councillors are responsible over 20 years for making sure that our city accommodates for the future issues. Except what we're hearing is just constantly blaming another level of government. Well, it's the LMP state government now, we're not seeing any changes. How many, how long has it been since October last year, and we're still hearing the same excuses again and again. So it's time for this LMP council to change their vision and propose something better than what they are today.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
I rise to speak on item A, and I wasn't actually going to speak on this item, but I'm definitely going to now. And I just want to thank all the councillors who've been engaged in the debate, but I just want to particularly acknowledge councillor Kim. Paragraph four of this report talks about, and I, I'll just say this, that council provides opportunities for additional housing supply and choice aligned with Brisbane's Sustainable Growth Strategy, Brisbane's Housing Supply Action Plan, Shaping SEQ Regional Plan. Now, my understanding as part of our planning regime is that looking at more opportunities for affordable and social housing is part of that plan, but you would not, not just supply, but the choice in supply. And I think that councillor Kim was trying to make a very good point here, that we are hearing from organisations all over the city that there is a problem with the choice and type of supply that is out there, and that many people can't afford a $4 million unit like being proposed at Yarong Pili in a 26-storey tower, where the developer had a secret meeting with councillor Adams, Adam, Alan Adams, and he didn't take any notes about the secret meeting. But, you know, that's a $4 million apartment, and not everybody can afford that. So councillor Kim, your point was well made, despite the chair trying to stop you from making it. That choice in housing means diversity in housing, and it means making sure we pull the right levers, not just to have expensive housing that wealthy people can afford. So thank you for putting it on the record, I appreciate. The LMP don't want you to do that, and you did it very well. I would just like to make one other brief point about, about this matter. We've got the Alderley Centre Suburban Renewal Precinct Plan, which doesn't even look like all of Alderley, to be honest. It just looks like the central business district of Alderley, so it's a tiny bit of a suburb. So you know they've got an agenda, because it's not the whole suburb. There's already the Ingrah, what's it called, the Ingrah District Neighbourhood Plan, Ingrah District, so there's a neighbourhood plan as well. So the LMP have gone out, and they've done a neighbourhood plan, they've done a district plan. I bet you if I looked at Alderley, you know, Ingrah, there'd be plenty of stuff on the LGP for them. But out my way, do you know what happens? This council doesn't do neighbourhood plans. In fact, just last week, council approved a development in Yaronga, and they said in the development conditions that the neighbourhood plan would help structure what kind of development would happen in this part of Yaronga. Do you think there is a neighbourhood plan in that part of Yaronga? No, there's not. So, you know, I wonder what this is all about, because it won't be about what the LMP are talking about. I suspect, like councillor Griffiths has pointed out, that the Better Suburbs Board have been borrowing away behind here, that they'll have clients, these people are property professionals on this board, who are paid to have secret meetings with councillor Alan, Adam Allen, with the council officers, they're not accountable to the public, they're not accountable to this chamber, they're donors to the Liberal Party or former members of the Liberal Party, they're having private meetings with council officers, they're determining where investment happens, none of it is accountable, none of it is transparent. And what we see is then odd proposals like this come forward, where there's already a neighbourhood plan that should help guide what happens in this area. So something else is going on here. I would hope that councillor Kim, that there might be some consideration, given how well-placed this is with its infrastructure, as councillor Wines, who's, you know, not listening, he says there's buses and trains, that's exactly what the elderly need, that's exactly what key workers need, that's exactly what people with disabilities need. And I hope that council looks at some inclusionary zoning here to make sure that we can see some affordable housing. Perhaps there's an opportunity for the Brisbane Housing Corporation in this part of the world. From memory, I think the LMP have opposed high-rise development in this part of the world previously, but I'm going back a few years now. So I just want to say, the LMP really, I think what you're seeing here is not what you're going to get. There'll be an agenda, and I'll be interested to see what it is.
Further speakers. No further speakers. We'll now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to debate item B and C. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Item B authorises the lease of council land to community organisations. As you know, under state legislation, we generally can't enter into a lease without going first out to tender, open tender. And when we do go out to open tender, we're bound by state legislation governing procurement and the awarding of contracts. So this would mean then that volunteer community organisations, many of whom have long-established relationships and histories at these sites, would be at a disadvantage. So under the City of Brisbane Act, we can apply for an exemption to the ordinary regulation on tendering and disposal of land, and that is what this item before us today seeks to do. This allows council to keep our fantastic local community organisations in their homes, in our suburbs, by ensuring the organisations and the residents who run them have some certainty of tenure at the site. Some of the organisations in the item before us today include the Curragh Knights Cricket Club in Runcorn, the Kenmore Men's Shed, Mitchelton Sports Club, and the Balmoral Cycling Club, which is now obviously setting in to their new and improved facility at Murray Recreation Reserve. The Brisbane Racing Club will also have their lease at Mortimer Road Park Extended, where they have run the South Sports Club for a total of eight years so far. I know that the local councillors who engage with these community groups on a regular and daily basis will be very supportive of this outcome, and I commend the item to the chamber. While I'm here, Madam Chair, I speak to item C. Just briefly, in this report, 21 out of 22 of the contracts, that being 95% of the contracts, were awarded to local suppliers. Some of the things that caught my eye were landscape and turf supplies and associated services for our parks and wonderful public spaces that we have here in Brisbane, our aircraft services for mosquito control, which I'm sure will trigger the opposition, bank stabilisation at Sir Chandler Park at Indrapilly, replacement of the Fenwick Park Playground following an arson attack, upgrade to the playground at Green Park in Winham, and maintenance of the bus fleet CCTV, and I commend the item to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. On clause B, the lease of council land to community organisation, I guess for the groups listed here today, this is some good news and assurances for them. It is interesting timing, of course, that this, this item comes to council for decision the week after the MBJ MCC club were in the gallery last week, trying to find out how they will be supported by this LMP council, who will be kicking them out with nowhere to go. So my question to the LMP administration is this, how do we know that you won't just rip the land out from underneath these clubs in future? This LMP regime very much see themselves as landlords when it comes to community clubs, rather than being supportive partners. On this side of the chamber, we have always maintained that while the Olympic and Paralympic Games are for a matter of weeks, that their legacy should last a lifetime, and just like transport and housing, we should be here leveraging, leveraging the upcoming games as a once-in-a-generation opportunity to invest in our community and sports clubs to support so many Brisbane residents for decades and decades to come. On clause C, contracts and tendering, well, councillor Adams kind of made it pretty obvious last week, costs are going up, as we all know, but the suburban enhancement fund under this LMP regime stays the same. And what that translates to in real terms is that is a real cut for our communities from this LMP council, and it shows in the contracts before us today. What I am sure of, though, is that the costs for design and printing and distribution for the Living in Brisbane newsletter have definitely gone up under this LMP. They love to advertise themselves, of course, that is their priority, as have costs to travel the world, to cater LMP lunches, and to throw parties for the well-connected. Talk about the LMP's priorities, but do we see any quote-unquote sensible savings in those areas for the LMP? Absolutely not, no way. Well, more people are moving to Brisbane, they are paying more than ever but getting less from this LMP regime. On contracts four and five, playground upgrades in Winham and Mitchelton, we of course welcome that. However, a word of caution, of course, to the LMP is if you are going to invest in a new asset, you also have to invest and be committed to its maintenance so that it remains a great community asset. What does that remind us of? The LMP's neglect of the Story Bridge. Their track record on maintaining community assets is terrible. The LMP love to claim millions of dollars are spent in the suburbs, but that is of course writing off depreciation. No one is arguing that costs aren't going up and money is tight. The argument is about where your priorities lie as an LMP council. And again, we see time and time over. It is on the Lord Mayor's political, political survival, that's the decision-making basis, not on the future of our communities. On contract seven, the maintenance of on-bus CCTV systems for bus driver safety, well, we know what the LMP's track record is on this, and they have of course been dragged to address this issue. This council does not have the same excuse as their state government counterparts. The LMP have been running Brisbane in council for 21 years now, and over that time, we've seen unfortunately too many attacks and injuries that should have been a real rallying cry to action for this LMP council, but it simply hasn't been the case so far. Councillor Wines waxed lyrical in here last week about how great it was to get money for this, from the state government, but that amount is not enough. One-fifth of all buses in our fleet have barriers, and we're almost 30 years away from retrofitting the fleet if we continue. For councillor Wines to talk about quote-unquote 'listening to drivers', it's a joke, because if he was listening, he'd be pushing to bring back the bus driver safety program, not just as a one-off. CCTV maintenance is part of the equation, of course, but we cannot stop there, there is so much more to be done.
Further speakers. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I rise to support item B, the lease of council land to community organisations. This recommendation is about giving 11 community organisations the certainty that they need to keep doing what they do best, delivering sport, recreation, cultural and community services that bring people together and make Brisbane even better. So from the Curragh Knights Cricket Club in Runcorn to the Shed West Men's Shed in Kenmore Hills, these groups are part of the fabric of our sitting. They're run by volunteers, supported by families, and relied on by thousands of residents every week. The Shriner Council is proposing to apply an exception under section 226 of the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012, which allows us to continue to discuss lease opportunities with community organisations without going through a tender or auction process. It's a practical step, but it's also a meaningful one. So Chair, because it means we can get on with lease negotiations quickly and efficiently, and help these groups continue operating in the spaces that they've made their own. This is about backing our communities, doing the work, running junior rugby league, running junior rugby clubs, operating kindergartens, managing community halls, and creating safe, welcoming places for people of all ages. It's also worth noting that this is not a one-size-fits-all approach. Each site has its own needs, and council officers will work closely with the relevant councillors and organisations to make sure the lease terms are fair, sustainable, and tailored to the local context. And while this item is about leases, it's really about people, Chair. It's about 700 members of the YMCA, the 400 players at North Brisbane Rugby Club, and the 100 participants at E-Waste Connection, and the 350 members of the Kenmore Bridge Club. It's about the volunteers who keep the lights on, the parents who drive their kids to training, and the seniors who find friendship and purpose in their local men's shed. This is just one of the many ways the Shriner Council is delivering for Brisbane. We're investing in infrastructure that supports active lifestyle, fosters local pride, and strengthens our suburbs. We're renewing parks, uprating playgrounds, and improving accessibility. We're backing the arts, supporting festivals and creating spaces where creativity can thrive, and we're doing it all with a focus on inclusion, connection, and community. Because that's what makes Brisbane such a great place to live, work, and relax, so I'm proud to support this item today.
Further speakers. Councillor Mathi.
Thanks, Chair.
Actually, yes, go ahead, Councillor.
Thanks, Chair. I just rise to speak briefly on item B. We know that community facilities across all of our wards are some of the most important ways of connection and engagement, not just for people that are part of these sporting teams or the community facility itself, but also for the volunteers and the people that work within community facilities. I know that organisations that do incredible work from council community facilities, I'll name a couple just because they're on the top of my mind, these include like Community Plus, and the Community House in West End, of course, Communify at Carupa Hall, and even Rosies, who we welcomed to their manual Mission Precinct last week, are amazing contributors, particularly to those that are most marginalised in our communities. Sporting facilities also play a really important role. We know that as populations increase, having places to connect, meet up, and for the kids and adults alike to be able to have activities is really important. But what I will say is that we also know, and it's important to put this on the record, that there is a long list of organisations that can't get a community facility. And of course, the reason for that is because we're not expanding our community facilities and the community facilities that we own. We are sometimes closing them, I'll take that interjection, councillor Griffiths. And as we look to a future, we're not only the population of Brisbane across most of our wards, but I will say, very significantly within the GAB ward, the role of community facilities plays such an important role. And I'm not just talking about the leased places, I'm also talking about the green spaces that we should be able to provide as council for sporting facilities. I'll just give an example of one community group that's doing amazing work, that has been tirelessly trying to find just a little nook and cranny anywhere near Banjapa Park in West End. One of these groups is called, this group is called Community Friends. On Wednesdays, a dedicated group of volunteers through this organisation deliver food to over 300 people every Wednesday. This organisation isn't looking for a big space, they just want to be able to store their keys, because people line up to receive food and other products for hours beforehand. And there is no place for this, there is no place for this to happen. I know that there's many other facilities, community organisations out there that need this support too. The other thing that I'll also just touch on is, through you, Chair, it is correct. Through you, Chair, councillor Howard is right. It is about people. It's about the people that are part of the community organisations, the sporting groups, the volunteers, and the work that they contribute. But what I will say, and I just take this moment to highlight an example in a lease locally, we have a wonderful community group called the Jane Street Garden, and the Jane Street Garden are on a lease, and every year, this gardening group that doesn't use the water, because they have a natural watering system, that doesn't use council facilities, have to pay a lease of $600-plus to be able to garden in that space. Why is council acting like a landlord? Shouldn't there be facilities, including Jane Street Garden- including Jane Street Garden, a garden that shouldn't be under a lease? My concern is, and while it is great to see that these leases are organised, I just want to put on the record, can we work towards ensuring our gardening groups aren't playing arbitrous leases that they're not going to be able to pay for? Gardening groups are not earning money. They're not supposed to. Gardens are a wonderful place to not only provide connection and community, but also a wonderful place for people to go and pick fruit, pick vegetables and to connect with each other. And I think that's an important thing to say. Across multiple leases, it seems that council is acting like the landlord. So are we the landlord or are we Brisbane City Council working for its people?
Further speakers, councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I rise to speak in support of item B, the leasing of council land to community organisations. My interest specifically relates to the three organisations which operate on council land at 98 Brookfield Road, Kenmore. They've been Men's Sheds West, Men's Sheds West, Kenmore Bridge Club and E-Waste Connection. Each of these three tenants provide valuable services for residents of all ages in my community. Men's Shed helps improve the health, wellbeing and social connection of men, particularly those who may be retired, unemployed, socially isolated or experiencing life changes. E-Waste is a social enterprise which provides opportunities to recycle, volunteer, train and empower people of all abilities in an inclusive environment. Residents can volunteer in workshops, donate electrical items, purchase recycled working items or donate funds or equipment. And the Kenmore Bridge Club with about 400 members is one of the largest in Brisbane and provides opportunities to play one of the world's most popular card games, be it socially or competitively. Chair, I've spoken in this chamber during the past five years about the need to provide upgraded facilities on this site for all three tenants. And thanks to the Shriner Council, that has now happened. With funding provided by both the federal government and our council, works have been occurring on this site during the past eight months to provide improvements for all three groups. And the good news is that we're planning an official opening later this month to celebrate the occasion. And I look forward to joining Senator the Honourable Anthony Chisholm representing Federal Infrastructure Minister Catherine King to cut the ribbon and cake to mark the completion of this upgrade. I thank the federal government for their contribution to this upgrade, but it would be remiss of me not to mention how this funding was secured in the first place. Full credit for that goes to former member for Ryan Julian Simmons for his advocacy in securing this federal grant. When I raised this with him soon after my election in 2020, he understood the importance of delivering something at 98 Brookfield Road that benefited all three tenants. He was insistent on this point and made it a condition of securing the funding. It was an interesting journey with some bumpy rides along the way, but he secured the grant for the Shriner Council to do what it does best, delivering community infrastructure in the suburbs. I know Mr Simmons will be proud to see the results of his advocacy and I intend ensuring he receives an invitation to the official opening on the 25th of September. Chair, for the record, the improvements include a brand-new central building with a communal meeting space, a car dealing room for the Bridge Club, a tech hub area for Men's Shed, an upgraded amenities including two new ambulance toilets and toilet for people with a disability. The Kenmore Bridge Club now has more room to play. Internal walls were removed to maximise space, a new kitchen and ambulance toilet have been added, plus a covered outdoor seating area. E-Waste Connection now has an exclusive use of the building opposite their workshop for extra office and storage space, complete with a new ambulance toilet and a pedestrian crossing for safer site access. And Men's Shed West has a new dust extraction system and an upgraded kitchenette, helping keep things cleaner and more comfortable. Chair, in summary, these three tenants tick all the boxes in terms of serving our community and I'm pleased that the Shriner Council is proposing to extend their respective leases at the Kenmore Community Centre. And I urge those opposite to support this recommendation. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks Madam Chair. I rise to speak on this item, particularly in relation to community facilities first. It's interesting, I've been here 22 years and all of that's been during LNP rule. And during LNP rule, they only congratulate themselves on what they've done and how great they're doing it and they seem to have no idea about what is actually happening out there. So I just put a question to the administration, of the 600 community facilities that you've been managing for 22 years, how many are fully accessible? Not many. In fact, council officers tell me we can't use council facilities, council, community facilities because they aren't accessible. So as we march towards the Olympics, what we say is one thing, what the LNP says, what the LNP does is another thing. And last night, I was at an award ceremony for a resident, Helen Gray, and she's a girl guide leader at Coopers Plains. Woo Tu is her name in the group. And I spent two hours there and the majority of it was listening to the resources they need. So there's a leaking toilet block next door that smells foul. There's no safe lighting for the girls to get from the car park, the car park isn't lit, the girls to get from the car park into the building. The building is not accessible. It was just one thing after the other, after the other. Oh, they just want a water tap. Crazy, isn't it? They just want a water tap. So what we're saying here is how wonderful we are with leasing and community facilities, but I don't think we are wonderful. I think we're doing a really average job, if you can even call average good. Now, I appreciate councillor Adaman is getting a new facility after four years and good on him for being able to lobby the federal government to put in money and get money out of council and that's good. I think that's great for his community. But imagine if we could do it for everyone in Brisbane. Imagine if we could provide good facilities for all our lessees across Brisbane that were fully accessible, that were built to the latest standards, that allowed multiple users. Imagine if we did that. Oh goodness, that would take a council with some vision. That would take, that would take a mayor who wasn't interested in developers, who was interested in a vision. That ain't what we got here. Anyway, in relation to that, yes, today I do have a lease going through for a facility on Mortimer Road and I think we've been waiting five or six years for this car park to go through. And I think eight years ago, we did, or the leasing unit did, a plan for the park, a master plan for the park. Nothing's happened. Zero. Big fat zero has happened, but we've got a master plan for the park. Anyway, we're going to put in 300 car parks and I welcome that. The state are paying a million, Brisbane Racing Club, I understand, are paying $500,000 and council's paying $200,000. We'll get 300 car parks and this is a facility that is busting at the seams already and they want to take on girls and women coming into NRL. So they want to grow their facility. So I don't think it should be taking 20 years to do this for this council. I don't think we're meeting the needs. I think this is okay and yes, I'll be supporting this, but we're so far behind the times and we keep telling ourselves how good we are. I just think we can do so much better. In relation to contract seven, bus driver safety and cameras, of course we're going to support that, but I just note that 800, I think it's 800 of our buses don't have driver enclosures or driver safety. And that's with 20 years of the LNP being in power. 20 years of the LNP being in power. They see daily attacks, our drivers, daily spat on, daily abused, but we haven't been able to organise that. I think they need to be installed now. Not playing games with the state government. We should get on, find the money and sort this out now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Givney.
Thank you Chair. I rise today to speak on items B and C of the Establishment and Coordination Committee report, specifically the lease exemption for Manly Kindy, our community kindy and the contract for Green Park's upgraded playground. Firstly, I'd like to speak on the lease renewal for Lady Gary Queensland Limited at Harman Park, which is 25 Harman Street, Manly, which is the home for Manly Community Kindy. This service affiliated with Lady Gary has been the cornerstone of early learning in Manly for decades. Lady Gary has been at the forefront of early childhood education in Queensland for more than 80 years. As a central governing body for the affiliated community kindergartens, it provides not only good governance, but it also invaluable guidance to support and ensure children receive quality approved kindergarten programmes. This single unit centre caters for children aged three and a half to four and a half with a dedicated blue group and red group each week. Small by design, it is just 22 children per group and the kindy provides a nurturing and personalised learning environment. Each child is supported by a qualified early childhood teacher and teaching assistant, ensuring the highest standards of care and education. Their philosophy is grounded in respect, inclusion and sustainability. It is evident in their play-based, inquiry-driven programmes that they honour the diversity of every child and family who walks through its doors. What makes this kindy truly special is a strong relationship with the community around it. A wonderful example of this is their partnership with the Bayside Woodturners and Woodcrafters Club, which is just situated next door. Recently, the kindy children were busy painting panels for a TP that the Woodturners are building for them. It's a project that blends creativity, craftsmanship and community spirit and the children are very excited to play once they are completed. It's these kinds of collaborations that show how much the kindy is valued locally and how it enriches not just the children but the wider community. As someone who worked previously as an early years teacher for 13 years, I know how important these early informative years are. Community kindergartens like Manly Kindy don't just prepare children for prep, they shape confident learners, creative thinkers and resilient young children who will carry those skills into their learning and beyond. Under the leadership of supervisor Kiara Rice, the service continues to provide an outstanding programme for our local families and I strongly support council's decision to provide this exemption so that the community kindy can continue to thrive at Harman Street. And not only, it's not only about the land tenure, but it's also about safeguarding the early years opportunities for our youngest residents, supporting families and investing in the future of our community. Now to contracts and tendering, I'd like to speak on contract CW17705, the Green Park Playground Upgrade. This much-loved location, Green Park in Winham, is set to receive a major playground upgrade and to make it more fun and exclusive for children of all abilities. This project is a fantastic outcome of ongoing community conversations reflecting the wishes of local families and stakeholders who want to see Green Park revitalised as a safe and welcoming place for everyone to enjoy. The playground upgrade has been designed with a fishing trawler theme, paying homage to the history of the nearby fish market site, celebrating Winham's strong connection to our fishing heritage. These works will also complement the recently lodged development application for the old fish market site, which proposes a vibrant new waterfront venue. We look forward to seeing families picking up fish and chips at the new takeaway and enjoying them in the park, bringing renewed life and activity back to this once iconic bayside location. Additionally, suburban enhancement funds will be allocated to further revitalise Green Park, providing, supporting landscaping both functional and decorative lighting, pathways, seating and other amenities to enhance the experience for all park users. Together, these improvements will reinforce Green Park's role as a cherished bayside location and inviting pace for families, neighbours and visitors to come together and enjoy the waterfront destination. The adjacent dual-purpose car park at Glenora Street Boat Ramp was recently completed and ensures better accessibility for small water craft and supports local recreational use of our beautiful bay. Life on the bayside is thriving and this project is just another that's making our parks even more welcoming for residents and visitors. As you may know Chair, it's all about Winham, Winham, Winham. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Thank you Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on item B. I was one of the fortunate councillors that had, have one of our fantastic sporting groups that are going to get an extension to their lease. The WASP Junior Rugby League Club, right, have been going for 18 years. And I looked that up the other day, I think 18 years, wow. I just, I sort of remember when they, when they took over the space and they got a clubhouse built and they've been, they've been doing some fantastic work in the, in the community with kids, especially under 10s and four-year-olds, basically up to 10-year-olds with that football code. And we're fortunate to have a college, St John's, who also plays that as a code in their, in their, in their school. And they do access the field from time to time for games and a little bit of practice too, I think. This, 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 this club, this group have been, as I say, going for 18 years and the current president, Veronica, has I think been there since the, since the beginning. I pay tribute to her and her commitment to our community is just phenomenal. She's got a, she's got a deputy Matt who, who came on board a few years ago and he's, he's a man, he's a jack of all trades actually and he looks after the fields, both the cricket as well as the rugby union field as well. He's got, he's a young guy, he's got a young family, but he really has a passionate passion for the community. The, they've done some fantastic work recently as well to activate the space as much as possible, right? Because you don't want, you don't just want a code just playing and using the field for their season. You want others to use that space as well. So they, they have touch football, they have Frisbee, a Frisbee club. Aren't they good? I'll tell you. Unbelievable to watch. They have also a senior union club as well and as I mentioned before, St John's use the, use the space as well. I can't speak too highly of them. They also have a monthly markets. It's the second Friday evening of every month, right? They have a, have a markets as well. And they're able to raise money from those markets to pay the fees for the kids, right? Which is, which is really terrific. I mean, there's a lot of families out there that are doing it tough, you know, and, and they've, they've just stretched their volunteer base just to take on the market so that they can look after the kids. So as many kids as possible can play, can play the sports. Also want to pay tribute of course to Super Kings who have taken on the cricket, what now has become a cricket field on number one oval. And they're continuing to, with, with the support of the WASPs, who are the leeses, they're continuing to grow that space with infrastructure. We, we recently in the last 12, 18 months put up a perimeter fence which just set off the field. They put turf wickets in before which cost tens of thousands of dollars. And we now, and they're now going to put in some batting nets as well, right? I had council officers in and they've, they've identified the space. Cricket Australia is kicking in for some, for some money for that as well as I am. And, and I think they've got some funding from some of the corporates as well. Anyways, this, this club, as I say, has done a terrific job over the last 18 years, but they have struggled, like a lot of the clubs, to pay the water bill, which has been a big, a big issue for them up until recent times when it just doesn't stop raining. They've also had, they also had a bit of a scare three years ago, three, four years ago, because they had to replace the retaining wall, which was going to cost about a half a million dollars. But council put in a funding request to, to the federal government and that has been taken care of. And it's, it's going to be there. This, this retaining wall has been replaced with concrete from timber, so it'll be there for many years to come. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Wolf.
Thank you very much Madam Chair. And I rise
And I rise to speak on item C in support of the bank stabilisation works proposed for Sir John Chandler Park in Indrapilly. This is a vital project that addresses both environmental resilience and community safety. As we know, our incredible river is a defining feature of Brisbane, but it's also a powerful force when we experience it in severe weather episodes. Sir John Chandler Park is a peaceful riverside gem tucked away at the end of Myers Road next to Indrapilly Golf Club. This park offers sweeping views of the Brisbane River and a serene escape from the city's bustle. This spot includes both a boat ramp and pontoon that are open to the public and provides river access for fishing, kayaking, boating and lots of similar water activities. The park is certainly well-loved by families and dogs, with a fenced pirate ship themed playground, ahoy me hearties, picnic tables, barbecue spots, grassy expanses and shaded paths, but best of all, there's a generous off-leash area for dogs too. At Sir John Chandler Park, years of erosion and weather events have impacted the riverbank, threatening not only the stability of the parkland but also the safety, amenity and long-term usability of the much-loved space. So this park is used daily by our community for sporting groups and residents who come to enjoy the river views, walk their dogs or simply relax in the open spaces close to the water. So it's a really important part of our local lifestyle and our history. Being named in honour of Sir, Sir John Chandler, who served as the Lord Mayor of Brisbane from nineteen forty to nineteen fifty-two, we cannot allow erosion to compromise this special and precious part of the Walter Tail Award. The bank's stabilisation works will ensure that the riverbank is properly reinforced using environmentally sensitive methods that protect the natural ecology of the area while also preventing further damage. So these works are about securing the future of the park, ensuring that the residents can continue to enjoy the space safely for generations to come. More broadly, this project reflects the importance of investing in the resilience along our riverfront. With the changing weather patterns and the increasing frequency of flood events, proactive projects like this are crucial and demonstrate council's commitment to safeguarding our parks and community infrastructure while also protecting our natural environment. I look forward to seeing these works completed and delivered with lasting benefits, not only for Indrapilly community, but for the wider Brisbane community who also enjoy and value this park. I want to thank our council officers who have been involved in developing and progressing this important project and I commend this item to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers.
Councillor Parry. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak on item C of the ENC report. In the contracts and tendering report for July, we have contract number one, which is the supply for landscape and turf supplies such as soils, mulches, barks, sand, turf, playground-specific materials and associated services used to maintain our open space areas. All the successful tenders for this contractor based in Brisbane will maintain a local office, which is really, really good to see. The supplies purchased can be delivered and installed if required, or we can simply purchase the materials alone. So for instance, council can collect or have turf delivered, have the contractor supply and lay the turf, or have the contractor undertake post-turf installation maintenance. The majority of the turf is for remediation purposes, following the completion of construction works, including footpath construction, pipe laying or excavation and curb and channel works. Brisbane residents can take great pride in their neighbourhoods and it's important that our council does the same. This is the bread and butter of local government and we're committed to getting it right. This is exactly why we're spending eighty-five percent of our budget in Brisbane suburbs. We're committed to keeping Brisbane beautiful and contracts like this before us today help us do just that. Brisbane is the lifestyle capital, capital of Australia and our natural environment is what makes our city so great. We have incredible parks and playgrounds like Bradbury Park, Hanlon Park, the Archerfield Wetlands and lots more, that create more to see and do in our suburbs. Our residents love to keep active and getting out for a walk, run or cycle in Brisbane. Constructing and maintaining footpaths and bikeways enables this healthy lifestyle and keeps our city moving. The Shrima Council is focused on getting the basics right and this contract today helps us do just that. Also in this report is contract number CW one seven nine nine six, which is for aircraft services for mosquito control. Madam Chair, one of the only downsides to living in Brisbane, of course, particularly in the, on the north side in some areas in Brisbane is the mosquitoes and the pesky insects show up uninvited to family barbecues to our city and can, I leave many of us seriously ill. This contract before us today is for aerial mosquito control services specifically for the application of larvicide via helicopter. Council's mosquito management programme is responsible for the control of mosquito species across Brisbane. Aerial application of larvicide is a major part of this programme and the primary species targeted is the salt marsh mosquito. The salt marsh mosquito is known to transmit diseases and is the main cause of mosquito complaints across Brisbane. Around twenty thousand hectares of largely inaccessible salt marsh mosquito habitat is treated by aerial application of environmentally safe larvicides each year. Our council delivers Australia's leading mosquito management programme all year round. It's an important programme that keeps our community safe and I commend this item to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Davis.
Thank you very much, excuse me, Madam Chair, and I'd like to speak on items B and C. Firstly, item B, which is the lease of council land for community organisations. I'd just like to thank councillor Howard for the work that she's done in this space, particularly around the Mitchelton Football Club. Councillor Wines and I are very familiar with this club whilst it sits in the McDowell Ward. Many of our families, both in the Ingraham Ward and McDowell Ward, are members of this club. It was established over a hundred years ago, they have fourteen hundred members. It's a wonderful, wonderful club that's a real asset to our local community and I commend them for being listed in those, in that leasing document. Madam Chair, with regards to item C, which is the contracts and tendering reports, I'll speak particularly to contracts three, four, five and six. Contract three is on the bank stabilisation works, it's Sir John Chandler Park in Indrapilly and councillor Wolf just gave us a wonderful history of that park and did let us know, and it's true, that this area is susceptible to flooding. And whilst we can't prevent flooding from happening, we have been working hard on a solution to build its flood resiliency and this contract goes a long way to achieving that. The scope of work includes removing redundant fencing and exposed trees and reshaping the steep bank, which has been showing signs of erosion. We'll be reusing excavated material to build a tiered lower bank. This bank will be wrapped in a jute fabric and heavily vegetated to hold the structure in place and support long-term stability. This is a smart, environmentally sensitive solution and it will protect the park, improve the safety of users and preserve the natural character of the area. And it's just another way, as councillor Wolf said, that we are investing in this park infrastructure to support both the community use and environmental resilience. Contract four is the Fenwick Park Playground Replacement. As you might recall, Madam Chair, this park in Mitchelton was badly damaged in an arson attack last year. It's incredibly disappointing for councillor Wines and his community who use the park that vandals burnt it down. Because of the scale of the damage, the play equipment needs extensive repairs. This construction work is due to begin late September and finish in November, councillor Wines. The new playground will be rebuilt like, for like with linked multi-level towers and slides, suitable for toddlers and older children. We're also adding a shade structure to improve comfort and usability. The playground has been in its current location for many years and has undergone some significant upgrades both in twenty ten and twenty twenty. And by restoring the park in its current location, we are able to retain some of the existing structures like the shade sailposts, allowing us to efficiently repair and return it to service. Fenwick Park Playground, Madam Chair, will be back better than ever and ready for families to enjoy by the end of November. Madam Chair, contract five is for the removal and replacement of Green Park in Winham. Councillor Givney talked about that earlier and the upgrade will offer more for families to enjoy locally. The new design features a fishing trawler theme, recognising Winham's fishing heritage. It will also suit a broad range, age range with swings, climbing elements and a slide. Construction is due to begin in mid-October, councillor Givney, with the playground expected to open by the end of December. Contract six relates to the removal of the old concrete bollards used for climbing on the Kangaroo Point cliffs. Brisbane is known for having a wide variety of outdoor activities and Kangaroo Point is a very important part of our recreational offering. And so last year, we embarked on a project to improve the climbing infrastructure on the cliffs. We started by replacing the old ring bolts as well as installing new ones, providing more anchor points along the ridge line. And as part of the project, we removed forty-one of the old concrete bollards from behind the parapet rock wall on River Terrace. These have been replaced with new ring bolts, which are easier to maintain and the feedback from the climbing community is that they provide a better climbing experience. Madam Chair, the, these items are all about maintaining our parks and offering more to see and do right across our city, particularly at the suburbs. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further speakers, councillor Wines?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak to item C principally, but also briefly to item B if I, if time permits. But also, I just want to take a moment to talk about contracts and tendering here. Firstly, two items, items seven and eight relate to the Public Transport Services section of council. It is maintenance of the on-bus closed-circuit television systems. As was discussed, this is part of our ongoing commitment to ensuring a bus, the bus environment is safe for both operators and passengers. And this maintenance work is necessary to ensure that we have an effective operation of that system for both, for twelve hundred vehicles and dependent on the supplier's DTI proprietary system installed both at the depot and on the bus. It is part of our ongoing commitment to having, as I say, safe, as safe, as safe environment as possible. Now, some people earlier took a cheap shot at our commitment to that, but I assure you that we are working with the state government to ensure that the barriers are rolled out effectively across our network. That is part of an ongoing discussion with them. There's nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been advised coming, is coming our way to continue that programme on. It is a, a programme unlike any other and better than almost every other programme like it in the country. The contracts and tendering also speak to the provision of Public Transport Systems Giro or the, or the Le Group En Informatic Air Recherche Operational, which is the group of information and research operations. We would, if you ever heard us use the term HASTIS, HASTIS is a programme we buy from them. It is an operating system that helps us program and roster effectively the bus, the bus network and also helps us effectively as an asset management tool for the bus stops. And so it's a programme that we've been using for a long time and of course, it's renewal of that, of that item from a third-party licensee, a longstanding relationship and part of our, our commitment to ensuring that our buses operate as best as possible. The, just in response to some of the comments, I think it's important to reflect on the fact that this council possesses more than six hundred lease sites and on those lease sites, there are still, I would imagine, some hundreds more sublesses. And our council officers, our leasing officers have to engage with these clubs, have relationships with them to ensure that they are provided a high-level, a quality experience for their community and players. Now, some councillors have indicated why do they have to pay a lease at all? Well, the, the clear answer is there has to be a contract arrangement for their possession of the land and that contract, of course, will of course rely on some level of consideration. But it's important to reflect on, and I think sometimes this isn't talked about enough, that Brisbane City Council's rates for fields and the rents that are required of clubs are much less than other clubs. I know, you, Madam Chair, probably see it more often than I would, but when my ward was much clearer north-west than it is today, I would routinely have clubs in the Hills ask if they could come over to us because we were so much cheaper. And that's, but here, but there is a deal, I suppose, with that. In the Hills District, the council is much more heavily involved and tells, tells clubs what's going to happen and moves clubs on much more often than we do. We almost never move clubs on and we permit the, the lessee in so many ways to behave as they are the owner. And that's part of the arrangement, I suppose. So we provide them an opportunity, we remain landlords, but largely permit them to have a great deal of control over their land, much greater than Morton Bay allows over their land, their tenants. It's also, there was also a reflection on accessibility. Now, we've talked about this before. The, in my view, the great achievement of the Quirk era is accessibility inside Brisbane City Council and physical accessibility. This building is a great example. The only part you can't access in a, in a wheelchair is the public gallery because of the heritage listing and we tried very hard to fix that. And, and. It's, I was, I was blinded by councillor Strunk's tie myself. But, but what, but what I can say. But what I can say is that we have changed our bus fleet, we have bought metros in a specific way, we have amended our council facilities, our libraries and our pools to allow people of all mobility levels to access them. It has increased accessibility, it's increased opportunity, it's increased health and it has been largely for the improvement of this city.
Your time has expired. Further speakers?
No further speakers, we'll put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it, we'll now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Mass, Collier and second and councillor Kim. Thank you. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bell. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being fourteen in favour and six abstentions.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Wines.
Madam Chair, I move the report of the Public, Public Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth of August, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded, Madam Chairman.
Has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Toomey, that the report of the Public Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-sixth of August, twenty twenty-five be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Seconded.
It has been.
Oh, sorry.
Councillor Wines.
No, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to councillor Toomey and also councillor Howard for their enthusiasm. The, last week's committee heard a presentation on the history of Brisbane transport and public transport in this city. I can also advise councillors that our presenters Brett and Jess were so thorough in their presentation. At the twenty-five minute mark, I had to stop them when they got to the nineties and say, we're going to have to take this back half and we're coming back in the next session to do the back half. And can I thank them for their thoroughness? There was a lot to tell and it was a great story and I, I appreciate that. So we'll be coming back next session with the nineties to today, the history of BT. But the, the transport system of this city is deeply linked to the growth of this city and it's no small feat and been a remarkable journey that's brought us from horse-drawn transport to the sophisticated.
transport to the sophisticated electric-powered multimodal network we enjoy today. The journey began as far back as eighteen forty-three, so this was, as I say, it was a thorough presentation, where the first private cross-over ferry services began. Eighteen eighty-five, which predates Brisbane City Council as we know it and Australia as we know it, the tram services commenced laying the foundation for the interconnected transport future that was to come. The formation of the Greater City Council allowed us an opportunity to grant the right to operate tramway services and licence private bus lines, making BCC the only major provider of public transport services in the country at that time. Council also that same year purchased the first, its first fleet of buses, totaling eleven. The first council bus service ran between William Street in the city and Grange, and it was launched with just three buses, joined by three privately-owned vehicles. The Grange community enjoys telling this story because there was a competition between the private companies and in an attempt to put more passengers on the vehicles, one company cut the back out of their, their bus and extended it. And whenever the bus was full, the front wheels would lift off the ground and we were unable to move passengers anywhere. But that's a great story that Grange people love to tell. So alongside our buses, councils also run four passenger ferry services and three vehicular ferries, further binding communities on either side of the river. What can I say, but our transport history is not just one of expansion but of resilience. In nineteen twenty-seven, our bus services ceased due to operating losses and many buses were sold, but tram services continued with council reintroducing buses in nineteen forty with a new diesel fleet and the construction of the Light Street Tram Depot. The war years saw an impressive mobilisation and, and a remarked period for this council where four hundred women were employed as conductors to cover the men who'd left to fight the war overseas. By the mid-twentieth century, our city's transport system was thriving and by forty-five, record patronage on trams and buses had reached a hundred-and-fifty-two-and-a-half million trips, driven by petrol rationing and rapid urban development. So what had happened is because petrol had been rationed, many people were making the choice to use public transport at that time because it didn't affect their private vehicle ration that they could use for other necessary travel. Council replaced petrol buses with diesel models and expanded services and introduced route numbering reflecting a shift towards efficiency and accessibility. The nineteen sixty-two fire at the Paddington Tram Depot destroyed sixty-five trams, twenty, twenty percent of the fleet, and I assure you it was not lit by Clem Jones, no matter what the rumours would have you believe. Ultimately, the rise of affordable private vehicles and the flexibility of buses led to the eclipse of trams in nineteen sixty-nine. The final one to inaugure, in fact, ran in the December of nineteen sixty-eight and the final tram overall ran on April thirteenth, nineteen sixty-nine. From those days on, public transport entered an era of the bus-led innovation period. And the years that followed saw the council continually adapt and grow. I was honoured to be able to cut a ribbon on the restored and modernised City Express restoration, the Bus Museum, the Omnibus Society Museum, I should say, at Nathan. The City Express is actually a really interesting service, so it is the first of our long-distance dedicated services with dedicated stops designed to run every half-hour on the half-hour from Garden City into the city. I did, I did ask, what's the distinction between a Rocket and a City Express? A Rocket carries a lot of, catches passengers on the out-of-limits and brings them in quickly. A City Express, which is the precursor of the Buzz and the precursor of the, as I said, much more to come.
Your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths. I mean councillor Strunk.
The tie, the tie. Listen, I wasn't part of the, I wasn't part of the present. Thank you, Chair. I wasn't part of the presentation, I just wanted to say a few words. I started taking public transport in nineteen seventy-three. It was the one-seven-two, the Stafford one-seven-two. And, and then I was told, I was told about those trams that used to apply, it used to be, that used to traverse Brisbane in various suburbs. So I'll speak about from the seventies on. I won't speak, as councillor Wines does, back in his era, back to the eighteen hundreds. But, because I'm a bit younger. Anyways, it was, it was an interesting, it was interesting back then because there was no air conditioning in the buses. You had to open up all the vents, which was always a bit challenging because we used to get those rainstorms in the afternoon, late afternoon, that used to come through and during the season. And of course, if you kept the vents closed and the windows closed, of course, it was quite a little bit smelly inside the, inside the bus, to say the least, because everyone had run and they had just done a day's work. But they, they, they were on time. We had bust, we had bus inspectors and everything on every corner, especially through the valley in the city. And they were quite a, and they were quite, well, they, they, they kept those bus drivers to a timetable, I'll tell you, because they used to, occasionally used to hear them say a few words if they were running late or too late, I should say. But the bus system seemed to work very well and, and it was very well-priced, probably not as well-priced as it is today. Thank you to the Miles government and the Christopher Lee government, who's going to continue on with it for the term. But there was a lot more people in the city that seemed to take buses. There, there was not as many cars on the road. Cars were still pretty expensive. I mean, the, the basic car, a decent car, was about five thousand dollars in the early seventies and that was a, you know, that was a valet that, that a friend of mine owned and he paid about five grand and that was a, that was a used one too, by the way. It was a few years old. But we've come a long way in regards to public transport in the city. I do pay tribute to Clem Jones. Those trams, people, a lot of people loved the trams, but they were pretty ugly. They were very, the amenity of the, of the tram just didn't sort of, didn't really attract you to want to ride one, for me anyways, the one I've seen at the, at the museum. So the buses were certainly the, the, the way to go. I think we can thank Clem Jones for that, bringing them, bringing them forward and really covering the city from, you know, from Aspli to, to Wyndham, out to McGregor or Sunnybank, through to, through to, I don't know, through to the east. Anyways, I, I, I was going to sit in on the presentation, but I forgot it was actually on, so I do apologise. So maybe, maybe you'll do another one soon, maybe, maybe another one soon, so we can sit in, because it was quite an interesting history lesson. And I think as, as councillors, we should all be as, be informed as to what happened in the past, so we know where we're going into the future. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I do have to disagree with councillor Strunk. I think beauty is in the eye of the beholder and our Brisbane trams were all built in Brisbane. And they are a beautiful, beautiful tram. They were the first trams with the drop dead, drop dead centre. And as evidence that our trams are beautiful and beauty is in the eye of the holder, I give you Exhibit A councillor Strunk's tie. Madam Chairman, I, I love you, Charles, you're great, mate. Through the, through you, Chair, apologies. Madam Chairman, the presentation itself and councillor, councillor Wines was correct in saying that it was a fantastic presentation. My particular interest within the presentation did lie within the, the trams, having the Brisbane Tramway Museum within the Gap Ward. Trams in Brisbane are alive and running. And for those who are interested in nineteen fifty's technology, yes, they are still using the mercury vapor rectifier, which is basically a lightning storm inside a tube. And if you do get the privilege and the honour to, to actually see it running, it is very loud and the hairs on the back of your neck just lift up with the amount of power that they generate. But as, I do believe though, and councillor Wines may be able to correct me on this, the mercury vapor rectifier that the Brisbane Tramway Museum are running is the only one left in the country that is running, I believe. I think Melbourne closed theirs down, didn't they? Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Madam Chairman, Brisbane Tramway Museum is the home of Brisbane trams. They have everything out there. That was in the presentation, all the way from the horse-drawn carts, horse-drawn trams, all the way through to the Dreadnoughts and including the Phoenix class. Now, some councillors may say, well, what is the Phoenix class Dreadnought? Thank you councillor Adaman for the interjection, the question. The Phoenix class Dreadnought is the Dreadnoughts that were rebuilt after the nineteen sixty-two fire from leftover parts. There were eight of them built and they are significant in that they have a little Phoenix emblem on the front and the rear of the tram. And they are, they are a beautiful tram, despite what, what councillor Strunk thinks. They are a wonderful tram, but I do have to admit though, that with the trams, councillor Strunk was correct in saying that inside it got a little bit uncomfortable when it rained. The trams in those days did not have windows, they had blinds, canvas blind that used to come down, predominantly for the sun, wasn't all that great for the rain. But nonetheless, the trams did operate across, across the network. Madam Chairman, we lost about a quarter of the trams in the Paddington fire in nineteen sixty-two. We probably would have lost less if the fire system was working in Paddington at that time, but there was a loss, loss, loss of pressure. Some say it was Clem Jones, but councillor Wines has definitely put that myth to bed. If you ask the members of the Tramway Museum, they do wholly and solely blame Clem Jones for the loss of the trams. But what is interesting though, is that a lot of the parts from that time were donated to the Tramway Museum, including the most expensive rail parts, which was actually the point. So rail, tram rail in those days used to have a backing that used to stop the flange from coming off. In later times, when we were laying the, the tracks as a city, we got really smart and we actually just used ordinary rail line and formed the back catch in concrete, which actually saved the Tramway Corporation quite a lot of money in construction. Madam Chairman, I do only have a few minutes left and I do want to just put on one thing. One thing councillor Wines through you, Madam Chair, that the presentation did not have, was that our Lord Mayor is the first Lord Mayor since the trains were taken off the track to actually drive a tram. And I knew he was serious about driving that tram when he put the aviators on and let it open, let the regulator open and that trams went very, very quick up the hill. But it was a wonderful presentation. I commend the presenters. It was wonderful and I'm looking forward to part B. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Further speakers? No further speakers? Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I must also recognise that the Tramway Museum also provides an opportunity to wear, to purchase French-style caps, which were the fashion of all drivers up until the seventies, when we switched to a Kubras, something we learned in the presentation. But there was an interesting point. Look, I'm going to, there is some discussion about whether the old trams were attractive. I encourage you to go to the Tramway Museum, Tramway Street, Fernagh Grove and have a look, but the last generation of them were boxy and grey and hot. And I would, I would come down on the side of not a particularly appealing vehicle. But, but they were there, they served, they served this city well for the time that they were there. There was an interesting point made by councillor Strunk, which I must, must recognise and make a point of, he, like many, and myself, would recall the Leyland Panther, which was the foundation, the big, the workhorse of our bus system for many years. It was not, it was not air-conditioned and the air conditioning and ventilation system, we would call it a window. Now, that system of opening the window to cool down the buses, that only ended when the Liberals took control of this council. To a full air-conditioned, fully accessible, comfortable bus fleet, that was an achievement that occurred while I was in this place. And that occurred, if memory serves, around twenty-twelve, when our entire bus fleet was air-conditioned and our entire bus fleet was accessible, things that the mighty Leyland Panther, neither of those were true. So while sometimes there are criticisms of our record here in this place, our record on accessibility, both in community spaces and accessibility in public transport, is as good as it gets by any government. And our commitment to comfort and appeal, I've heard, I've, I've heard, I've heard an interjection, not true, I would, I would challenge that councillor to find a government where physical accessibility occurs more than in this council. Now, the fully air-conditioned fleet is something that we delivered and, and since that time, it has, there has been a significant year-on-year growth, but for years such as Covid, but a year-on-year growth and increased appeal and increased usage of our public transport network, in particular the buses. So that, of course, the air conditioning story, that'll be in the next session, but it's important to remember that the uncomfortable, the uncomfortable, un-air-conditioned system, that was Clem Jones, Roy Harvey, Frank Sleeman and Jim Sawley, and that didn't change until we took control of this place.
We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it, that is carried. Councillor Parry, Infrastructure Committee.
Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth of August, twenty-twenty-five be adopted. Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Parry and seconded by councillor Dixon that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-sixth of August, twenty-twenty-five be adopted. Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to give the Infrastructure Committee report. And last week, we had an excellent, excellent inner-city construction update from one of our wonderful offices, Bridget Luke. And can I just give a shout-out to Bridget, because she's been amazing, particularly while I've been acting for the very short time in this role. This presentation looked at a number of projects, including the recent successful busway tunnel commissioning and other changes rolled out under Brisbane's new bus network. We also heard about council's plans to restore the Story Bridge and reopen one side of the footpaths before the end of the year. It was also great to see all the changes introduced because of Brisbane Metro and Brisbane's new bus network. And for those who attended this committee meeting, you can, you can't be mistaken, there is so much, there is so much happening in Brisbane right now and things are only going to get busier, which is incredibly exciting. This important quarterly update demonstrates that we are committed to delivering the infrastructure that we need in a growing city to keep Brisbane moving. Madam Chair, the Infrastructure Committee also dealt with a number of petitions. Firstly, we had a petition requesting that council install a protected bi-directional bikeway on George Street from Alice Street through to the Brisbane Magistrates Court. This petition contained four-hundred-and-ninety-one signatures and this part of George Street is identified as a primary cycle route on the bicycle network overlay in council's Brisbane City Plan twenty-fourteen. The petitioner's request for a protected bi-directional bikeway was noted and aligns with council's broader support for improved active transport connectivity. Council's preferred approach to delivering high priority active transport links is through planning and designing separated active transport infrastructure. We have successfully secured part funding from the Department of Transport and Main Roads through the Cycle Network Local Government Grants Programme for the twenty-five, twenty-six round. And this funding will support an options analysis for the extension of the City Link Cycle Way through the CBD and Fortitude Valley, including George Street. We remain committed to working with the department to progress extensions to the City Link Cycle Way. Consideration for funding to progress detailed design and construction will depend on an endorsed concept design and future prioritisation against other projects across the city. Secondly, we had a petition requesting a protected bi-directional bikeway on Herschel Street in Brisbane City. This petition contained eight-hundred-and-thirty-four signatures. As I just touched on, council is, is committed to improving active transport connectivity within, in the city and Herschel Street is identified again as a primary cycle route under the bicycle network overlay in Brisbane's, Brisbane, sorry, in council's Brisbane City Plan twenty-fourteen. Through the funding, council has received via the twenty-five, twenty-six Cycle Network Local Government Grants Programme, we will undertake analysis for a potential extension of the City Link Cycle Way through the CBD and Fortitude Valley. Council will continue to assess opportunities and work collaboratively with stakeholders to improve active transport infrastructure across Brisbane. Finally, we had a petition containing three-hundred-and-forty-five signatures and councillor Huang's ward requesting that council fund safety upgrades at the intersection of Dawson and Newham Roads in upper Mount Gravat. Newham Road is classified as an arterial road under council's Brisbane City Plan road hierarchy, serving as a key connector between major centres and supporting public transport and freight movement. Dawson Road is classified as a suburban road in the same hierarchy, linking to arterial routes and playing an important role in inter-suburban transport and freight networks. The petitioner's concerns regarding safety of this intersection have been noted. Council currently has a project listed to install right-turn arrows for the right-turn lanes on Dawson Road, which aims to improve traffic flow and which aims to improve traffic flow and safety. Due to high demand for road network improvements across Brisbane, all proposed upgrades must be prioritised to ensure resources are directed to areas with the greatest need and potential benefit. Council's consideration to progress the upgrade of this intersection will be subject to an assessment of its priority relative to other similar projects citywide. And finally, we had a few questions that were asked that I've taken on notice and I had planned, planned to respond to in committee today, but unfortunately we ran out of time. Councillor Strunk, who by the way, I think your tie is iconic, don't listen to the others, asked for an update on the Centenary Bridge. And I can advise that the Centenary Bridge is a project made by the Queensland Government's Department of Transport and Main Roads and not us. And then during the petitions, councillor Johnston asked how and who prioritises intersection upgrades. So I can advise that projects are prioritised based on a range of factors, including safety risk and community demand. Delivery timeframes are confirmed through council's annual budget process. And councillor Johnston also asked about the cost of my CEF submission, that's a local project that I've done through my CEF. The full cost of the design of the transport's traffic signal and road pavement marking plans and the installation of the traffic lanterns and all required components, plus all relevant road closure permits, traffic control and installation costs, corporate overhead plus contingency is $150,000. That concludes my report, thank you so much, madam chair.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. I rise, but, but let me first ask that item A be taken as a serial item for voting purposes. Thank you, thank you, Chair. Listen, I, I want to speak about petitions B, C and, and D on the, on the list. Well, the two petitions about the bi, bi-directional bikeway for George Street, right, are pretty much, pretty much the same, they're two separate petitions, though. And so they should be acknowledged for that. The, the first one is for 491 signatures and the other one for 834. So a fairly sizeable petition, but this, 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 this project has been muted for about 30 years. It goes back to 1995, when it was first, first raised. And there's been petition after petition after petition asking for this, this project to, to go ahead, right? Various Lord Mayors, of course, over the years. But I, I would have thought with the, with the increase in traffic, especially over the last 20 years, or even probably over the last 10 years, which has really ramped up down George Street, with all the, with all the development that's been going on, on that street as well, that we, we should have done something well before, well before now. Now, TMR has given us the money for an options analysis. Well, I would have thought we would, we would have been all optioned out. If you think about it, it's something that we, we, I mean, you know, we've had 30 years to think about this. So I don't think, well, thank you, TMR, for the money, right? But I, I, I think, I don't know, I, I don't know how much money it was, by the way, it doesn't tell us. But I would have thought that, that that would have been taken care of well, well before now. You know, it must be, it must be really challenging for bike riders in this, in this city, right? Who don't have designated bike lanes, right? And George Street is one of the main thoroughfares through this city. And there really, really should be one from Government House, or sorry, the Queensland Parliament, right through to Herschel Street, right? There should have been, there should have been one, but honestly, no money. There's, in, in this particular petition, the response is, but there's no money that council is saying that they're going to spend and there's no timeframe. And that's the response for both petitioners, or both, both petitions, that there's no timeframe and no money from this council that's gonna, that's, that's muted to be, to be allocated. There's certainly nothing in the, nothing in the, in the budget that I'm aware of or, or the petitioners are aware of either, right? So let's just get on with it, it's been 30 years, I think we've had long enough. We've had a lot of administrations come and go and the bike riders are still waiting. So let's just get with it and get it done. In regards to the, the other, the other petition, in regards to the turning lane out in councillor Hong's area, again, no timeframe, no money. We say that we're gonna, it needs to be done to make that intersection safer. But again, no commitment, no commitment from this council to one of their own, to one of their own, own members. And again, it's obviously, there's a lot of petitioners out there that know that this, this, this intersection could be made a lot safer if we can do something about that, that turning arrow to make the, to make the intersection safer and more traversable. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Oh, councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. Our actual order first, how much time do we have left? Regular meeting, sorry, I know it was a bit casual.
No, it's just that you've got a minute, so you want to make the most of it.
All right, we'll do the minute as quickly as we can. George Street, Herschel Street, they're the missing link for Roma Street. They're the missing link to the rest of the city link. It would be remiss of me not to mention William and Elizabeth, which is a floating tiny island that people are basically risking their lives for. What we know is the council will talk about unconstantly about how they are for active transport, they are the leaders in active transport, but actually never act when the links are there. The optional analysis for Herschel Street is the most laughable, since it's currently closed. And I'll just put up really quickly, Fortitude Valley, the optional analysis for that, everyone's been waiting for, for like five years. This is just more fluff, this, this area doesn't actually care about active transport. Because if it did, it would stop just doing optional analysis, waiting for money from the state government and actually commit to it.
Sorry, councillor Massey.
No, it's all good, I got my points in.
Under the provisions of section 3513 of the meeting's local law on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports, I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So we'll go to item A, all those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. We'll now go to B, C and D, all those in fa, in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Division called by councillor Massey and seconded by councillor Johnston. Ayes to my right, noes to my left, clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and 6 against.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, we'll now move to City Planning, Suburban Renewal and Economic Development Committee Report. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it, that is carried. We'll now move to Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. And we'll now move to Councill, Customer Services Committee. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to Community and the Arts Committee. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. And finally, Finance and City Governance Committee Report. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, madam chair, I have a petition requesting the installation of safe pedestrian crossing at Key-Tenerife intersection.
Councillor Chong Wah.
Thank you, Chair, I have a petition, has been received, oh, sorry. Where am I reading? Petition parking Spencers, Milton area, please, thank you, submit to the chambers.
Councillor Massey.
I have two petitions, Chair, save the wall of Queensland can factory and a pretty hefty petition for the metro stop at Dutton Park Bus Station.
Councillor Strunk.
Thanks, Billy.
Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. I have a petition requesting that there be a rate review for the Forest Lake Ward from petitioners.
Councillor Wines.
Thanks, madam chair, I have a petition from residents of the Western suburbs seeking alterations to some Western suburbs' bus services.
Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, madam chairman, I have a petition to, for drainage on a floodplain, thank you.
Councillor Dixon, may I have a motion for receipt of the petitions?
Chair, I move that the petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? We will now move to general business, are there any items of general business? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, madam chairman, I rise this evening in thanks. I'd like to thank two offices in particular who have spent a great deal of time creating one of the best playgrounds out there now in Upper Kedron at Honeyeater Park. We initially started this project about eight years ago when, when Upper Kedron was a small area, had young, young families there and we actually built age-appropriate playground. And as the suburb has gotten older and as the kids have grown up, with each stage we've built into the playground, are some ability filters that help kids move on to the next stage of play. And we've done that over, over five stages. We themed the park around birds, Honeyeater, so the play space itself is the shape of an egg. And we did, did that deliberately because the kids can actually get on their, their skateboard or their bike and they can ride around and creates another element of play. And the parents can watch the kids from a number of shelters around, around the playground itself. So they've always got a line of sight or an eye on the kids as they play. Madam Chairman, we took the barriers down on the last stage of this playground last week and I was rather excited by not only what had been delivered, but the fact that I had Shane and David with me for the whole eight years of accumulating this, this playground. I really want to thank Shane and David for the work that they did in this playground. It is truly a phenomenal playground now. It brings in elements of adrenaline, excitement as kids actually work their way through. It's a little bit of a, I don't know how to describe it really, it's a little bit of a hybrid ninja course meets ropes in trees. But we did finish it with a flying fox. And we had two types of flying foxes. We had one where the kids can actually sit by themselves and there's another one there for the babies. So mum can actually sit down or dad can sit down in the flying fox, hold the baby and away they go. So I ducked out to have a look at the, the playground on Friday night because the fences had only been down for about a day. The grass had taken, the trees were up, you could smell the sausages on the barbecues. I mean, you, the place was going off. The number of cars I counted in the street was about 30. I'd make the assumption that there were about 30 families there, just enjoying that whole space. And as I walked up, just to have a chat to a few of the people, I had this big grin on my face, could you, could see the excitement of all the kids around that playground, it was truly amazing, they were having so much fun, it was not funny. Although I did go up onto the flying fox and I did have a chat to one of the dads. And through you, Chair, to councillor Davis, I think we have a new problem with our playgrounds, councillor Davison, in that they are absolutely brilliant. This, this poor father had a sore arm from pulling the flying fox back up. I think one of his guns was actually larger than the other. But it was, it was a true testament to the work that the officers had done over the five stages of delivery. It was designed by the community, we went out to the community originally and said, what would you like to see here? And they came up with the ideas and Shane and David took those ideas and those concepts and turned them into reality and turned them into something truly, truly special. So I do want to thank them on behalf of all the residents in Upper Kedron, all the kids who love a bit of adrenaline, all the dads who like working the guns on their flying fox and the local councillor who's very, very excited to go and try the flying fox when my turn comes round. Thank you, madam chairman.
Further speakers? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to rise on three items of general business, the reopening and dedication of the Hamilton Activity Centre, portie in the park and labels on the lawn. Last Saturday, I was pleased to support through the Lord Mayor's Community Fund the reopening and dedication of the Hamilton Uniting Church's Hall, also known as the Activity Centre. For many years since Covid, the Hall has been shut, but thanks to Lenell and the Hamilton Neighbourhood Hub, they have lobbied the Uniting Church to re, to get it reopened. The Hall will fill a gap in the, in the community, becoming a much-needed place to connect and gather. So also, oh, got my speech notes mixed up a bit. So anyway, the Hall, the Hall has a rich history and at the opening event, it was wonderful to see people share their memories, their photos and what they'd like to see going forward for the Hall. So well done, Lenell and the community. My second item of general business, it was a very busy Saturday and we also had the opening, the portie in the park at Waterfront Park, which I attended with councillor Vicky Howard, it's a yearly event that's put on by enriching communities and both councillor Howard and I support it through the Lord Mayor's Community Fund. The event always supports dog-related charities and this year was no exception. Some of the charities that were supported were the Squishy Face Rescue and also devoted to Dash Hound Rescue amongst other charities. Newstead is certainly becoming a suburb with many dog lovers. So this event provides an opportunity to participate in a tail wagging agenda, which includes some, some dog training sessions, free teeth checks and even a doggy treadmill. I also want to thank our litter team and animal services team for attending the event. So thank you Suzanne and the team at Enriching Communities, the local businesses and residents that were supporting this event. Now, the third and final piece of general business is about Sunday, I attended Labels on the Lawn as a volunteer. So I just want to place on the record my gratitude to Marisa Vecchio, AM. She has championed this event, here, here, yes, at Hanworth House and she's championed this event for many years and they actually cracked the $1 million mark for Women's Legal Service Queensland on Sunday, which is very exciting. So this is the event where I actually found out about Women's Legal Service. So when I was on maternity leave with my first son, I thought I was just sorting clothes for a fun event at Hanworth House, but it was actually a little bit life-changing as I learnt very quickly about the life-changing work that Women's Legal Service do. So I was very pleased to volunteer again this year and I got to sell raffle tickets on the front door. It was lots of fun and I saw lots of people in my community and also across Brisbane. And I know that councillor Givney also is wearing a piece from Labels on the Lawn. So she got a bargain, which is quite exciting. But in all seriousness, I believe that this is the last Labels on the Lawn that Marisa is doing in its current form. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to her and all her volunteers, there's some that have been volunteering from the start. It's a big effort, but it makes a big impact, thank you. So I just wanted to say a big thank you to her and all her volunteers, there's some that have been volunteering from the start, it's a big effort, but it makes a big impact, thank you.
Further speakers councillor Collier.
Thanks very much Chair, before I begin, I just want to give a content warning that I will address topics of infant loss. I just want to speak on one item of general business tonight, It's From Elsie. Today, I want to acknowledge It's From Elsie, which is a perinatal bereavement and NICU charity whose aim is to relieve the distress and suffering of parents experiencing the death of their child as well as those requiring stays in the NICU. And their mission is to have Elsie's house, a space for bereaved mums in their fourth trimester. I'm incredibly honoured to be an ambassador for this important charity and I want to acknowledge Elsie's mum Kate, who is just such an incredible person. August marked what would have been Elsie's third birthday. Elsie lived for just seven days, but in those seven days, she changed the course of our lives forever. I want to share today seven reasons why Elsie's house is needed. Firstly, the first twelve weeks after birth is universally recognised as a critical period where mums need intensive physical, emotional and practical support. When a baby dies and the mum leaves hospital, this need for support doesn't disappear, it just becomes invisible. Postpartum care without a baby matters, recovery without the trauma of returning to baby focused spaces. It's From Elsie's, Elsie's house could provide gentle care while honouring grief. Thirdly, beyond the heartbreak of loss, mums are faced with impossible practical tasks like registering birth and death certificates, for example. These demands can feel totally unbearable and Elsie's house can walk alongside mothers through each step to ease the weight. Four, perinatal mental health facilities exist for mums with babies, but for bereaved mums who face the risk of depression, anxiety and the additional weight of grief, there is no dedicated space. Five, maternity leave with no baby is a time of profound isolation and Elsie's house would be there when everyone else returns to work and their usual routine. Six, after the loss of a child, leaving the hospital can feel like stepping into a world that makes no sense. Parents are alone with their grief and often unsure of what is normal or where to turn. And seven, many wonderful, amazing services already exist and support bereaved parents, but they remain fragmented and scattered across different places. Elsie's house could bring this care under one roof for holistic care where families don't have to retell their story or travel from service to service in an overwhelming time. Elsie's house would be the first of its kind, it would be an essential service and it would fill an existing gap. These things are not easy to talk about, but they are really important and I want to again recognise Kate, Elsie's mum, who has just turned her unimaginable loss and grief into advocating for those who really need it the most.
Further speakers councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you Madam Chair, I'd just rise to speak on one item, which is a birthday of a Brisbane great, the name of Brian Curl. So today we celebrate a true legend of Australian basketball. For those who may not know, Brian Curl is a former Olympian and one of the most influential figures in the history of the sport in Australia. He represented Australia at the nineteen seventy-two Summer Olympics and later went on to have a remarkable coaching career, leading both the St Kilda Pumas and the Brisbane Bullets to two NBL championships each. In recognition of his immense contribution to the game, Brian was inducted into the NBL Hall of Fame in two thousand and six, which is now part of the Australian Basketball Hall of Fame. Beyond his achievements on the court, Brian continues to give back to the community through Brian Curl Basketball, a Brisbane based program dedicated to using basketball as a vehicle to engage Queensland youth, promote healthy lifestyles, build skills and support education. Thank you Brian for your lifetime of service to the game and the community, wishing you a joyful and well deserved happy eightieth birthday. Thank you.
Further speakers councillor Chong Wah.
Thank you Chair, I rise to speak on the upcoming twenty twenty-five Australian Mayor's Summits against antisemitism. This conference is being hosted by the US-based combating antisemitism movement CAM, as an all expenses paid conference promoted to councillors and mayors across Australia in October in the Gold Coast. This so-called antisemitism summit is being chaired by Gold Coast Mayor Tom Tate of the Liberal National Party. The CEO of the combating antisemitism movement CAM was previously an Israeli defence, ex, sorry, ex-Israeli Defence Force commander that established a new media division propaganda unit, branding the IDF on social media and running advocacy activities with international organisations. This summit hosts earned recognition as a central figure in developing the army's digital warfare capabilities. Let's be really clear, CAM, the host of this Gold Coast Summit, is a pro-Israeli Zionist lobby group funded by Jewish American oil magnate and Trump donor. CAM is part of an American network of foundations who receive significant donations from multimillionaires. One of the goals of CAM is to combat the international boycott, divest and sanction BDS movement. This Gold Coast Conference raises disturbing ethical, political and community concerns due to the close ties that the Israeli Ministry of Foreign Affairs, multiple pro-Israeli Zionist organisations as well as property developers. CAM is closely connected with and promotes the Gaza Humanitarian Foundation. The Gaza Humanitarian Foundation Executive Chairman is also a CAM Advisory Board member. This nice humanitarian sounding foundation is part of the infamous Israeli government approved food distribution sites in Gaza. These sites have been labelled as death traps with documented killing and injuring of starving Palestinians seeking food relief. Doctors Without Borders, among other organisations, have called for the immediate dismantling of the government approved Gaza Humanitarian Foundation scheme. I want to mention one more organisation, the Jewish National Fund, who is also associated with CAM, the Gold Coast Summit host. The Jewish National Fund was founded to purchase lands for Jewish settlement in nineteen forty-eight. Their primary goal has been to ethnically cleanse Palestinian land in Jewish settlements and national parks. At the heart of the CAM campaign strategy is to promote and implement the IHRA definition of antisemitism, a highly controversial definition widely criticised for conflating antisemitism with legitimate criticism of Israel and Zionism. A conflation rejected recently by the Australian Federal Court in the Wyam versus Hatted case. The IHRA working definition is the strategy to silence pro-Palestinian voices in advocacy, including on university campuses and within public institutions. This has been noted not only by the Palestinian Muslim organisations, but by progressive Jewish groups and civil liberties advocates. The LNP hide their racist views behind this perverse manipulation of the IHRA definition by attempting to silence anyone who dares to criticise the IDF and the state of Israel. An attempt to silence anyone who cares about freedom, the ICJ, international human rights laws and anyone calling out the genocide. These LNP administration attacks and false claims of antisemitism have been directed multiple times at the Greens within these chambers. It's important to highlight the precarious position of mayors and councillors that are attending this conference as all, as an all expenses paid junket posing a serious potential conflict of interest through being bought and influenced by this extremist organisation. The tide is turning, fifty thousand plus people hitting the streets in Brisbane alone, which was probably the second largest ever protest in our history, after the Iraq war protests in two thousand and three, which has striking similarities. Australians are witnessing the horrible live stream genocide, a systemic slaughter of large defenceless population of innocent Palestinian civilians. Now, the pro-Israeli lobby organisation is making aggressive effort to assert its influence on all levels of government and the public institution by hosting this conference in reaction to all the protests and global movement to end fifty-eight years of occupation and ethnic cleansing. Thousands of Australians have signed letters to council urging them to not attend this conference due to this extremist far right agenda. I sincerely hope that the law man, this LNP council, have declined to attend this Israeli propaganda conference.
councillor Chong Wah, your time has expired, further speakers councillor Wolf.
Thank you Madam Chair and I rise to speak on three positive recent events that reflects the diversity and friendships of Brisbane. Firstly, the Festival of Commonwealth Friendship. Secondly, labels on the lawn fundraising initiative and thirdly, the Brisbane Fashion Festival. Firstly, I was honoured to represent the Lord Mayor at Government House for the Festival of Commonwealth Friendship, hosted by the Victoria League for Commonwealth Friendship. This festival was a true multicultural celebration, bringing together communities from across the Commonwealth, including Papua New Guinea and India. It was an honour to share the grand parade, multiple performances, traditional Indian classical music and conversations that highlight how Brisbane is enriched by our Commonwealth ties. I also got to participate in the demonstration of how to successfully drape an Indian saree. Six yards of grace, as it is often described, a beautiful reminder of the elegance and cultural meaning woven into these traditions. Secondly, I was proud again to support labels on the lawn at Hanworth House, raising vital funds for women's legal service Queensland. This service has long been close to my heart. I wish to acknowledge and also congratulate Marissa Vecchio AM, a dear friend to so many in Brisbane, who after many years of organising, has now passed the baton to the next generation of organisers. Marissa's dedication has ensured that this event not only supports vulnerable women, but also brings together Brisbane's giving community in a spirit of generosity and purpose. Thirdly, I'd also like to acknowledge the great success of the Brisbane Fashion Festival. This event continues to champion our incredible local fashion designers and has put Brisbane firmly on the world stage of fashion, innovation and creativity. Special mention to one of my local constituents Sally Anna Steele for her new collection launched at the Brisbane Fashion Festival on Thursday. And a heartfelt congratulations to Lindsay and Bryce for ten years dedicated to the Brisbane Fashion Festival. Twenty, twenty, I so corrected. It was also a pleasure to meet with Michael Waterhouse, Head of Innovation Agency at the London College of Fashion. During the Fashion Festival, he was also visiting for Brisbane's Something Digital twenty twenty-five and he shared his insight into the global industry. Our city has so much to offer and it's inspiring to see Brisbane's creative industries recognised internationally. Madam Chair, these three events, multicultural celebrations, supporting our local charities and celebrating the innovation of our local designers, all showcase the rich, connected and compassionate character of our city. It is an honour to witness and support these initiatives that strengthen Brisbane's sense of place while also making Brisbane's lifestyle even better. Thank you.
Further speakers. councillor Wines.
Thanks Madam Chair, I rise to speak about the hundredth anniversary of the Inaugural Memorial Hall. And so the Inaugural Memorial Hall sits on Wardell Street and has been there for many, many years. Now, it has been, it's been a key feature of our skyline, I'll call it that, for many, many years and the hundredth anniversary was well celebrated by the Inaugural Historical Society and the Inaugural Hall Memorial Trust. They, the building itself has had many forms. It was the original Inaugural State School that sat on the Inaugural State School site before it was moved to the location it sits at now to work as the School of Arts and then into the future it became a library. But it also had an important role in the community as the original hall for the RSL. So it is the original location of the Inaugural RSL. Some may ask, where is the Inaugural RSL today? I only know Gaythorn. A side story, some, about fifty-five years ago, there was discussion of the Inaugural and Mitchelton RSLs and they couldn't decide whether Inaugural or Mitchelton, or should be called Mitchelton Inaugural. And someone suggested, why not split the difference and call it Gaythorn? And that's why we have the Gaythorn RSL. So, which of course, for those who don't know, is the suburb between those two suburbs. So the Memorial Hall also, interestingly, before the advent of council libraries, the Hall actually operated as a community library run by trustee. I note my microphone says that I have thirty seconds to go, but I believe it's closer to two and a half or three minutes. So the, as part of the celebrations of the hundredth anniversary, there was also, there was also a book created by Diana Hacker, who in so many ways was the, the drive behind both the book and the event. I had the great pleasure of unveiling an information sign to celebrate the activities that occurred at the, at the Memorial Hall. For those who have not been in there, the main Hall section hosts all of the honour boards for all of the local residents who served both in World War One and World War Two. And then out the back is the, they call it the, I would call it a library and museum, but it's the, it's where the Inaugural District Historical Society keeps their collection of local memorabilia. I can also confirm to councillors that they were selling fetching tea towels such as this at, at the event to celebrate their, their hundredth birthday. Emceed by John Purn, a local notable of the Aldley area and retired brigadier and very, very famous in our area pediatric, pediatric surgeon, he's a leading figure and one of the community's great gentlemen. I can also recognise Kim Heisen, the President of the Inaugural Historical Society and I hear her here, she's also for a prominent lady herself through Rotary Alliance, one of the two in the inner north area. And she's a very generous person in our district, well known as well. As well, can I recognise Rod Tucker, the President of the, the trustees of the Hall Society. So the Hall itself is not actually a council Hall, it is still run by a board of trustees for its hundredth birthday, which I think is a wonderful achievement and due recognition to those community individuals, but also to the community who put this building at the, at the community heart of the Inaugural District's area. A final thought, for those who do visit, you'll see a large, I suppose, memorial tablet at the front of the building dedicated to Padre Brown, the diggers mate, who was a regular feature here, particularly after World War One and had a great deal to do with the inculcation of Anzac Day as we know it into our district. And his service to our area is well recognised by this building. Can I take a moment just to congratulate all members of the Historical Society, all members of the trustees and every person who's been involved in the preservation and commitment to the community that is involved in such a wonderful building as the Inaugural Memorial Hall.
Further speakers. councillor Huang.
Thank you Madam Chair, I would like to make a point of order. I move that the standing rules be suspended in order to move a motion that is not listed on the agenda.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Huang and seconded by councillor Wines to suspend standing orders, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it. councillor Huang.
Thank you Madam Chair, I move that, that as councillor Griffith has three orders of unsuitable meeting conduct issued within a twelve month period at the council's meetings on fifth November twenty twenty-four, tenth June twenty twenty-five and twenty-sixth August twenty twenty-five. And as section twenty-one ten of the meetings local law requires that these matters must be dealt with at the next meeting of council. So council resolves to refer the matter to the Office of the Independent Assessor.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Huang and seconded by councillor Dixon that one is councillor Griffith has three orders of unsuitable meeting conduct issued within a twelve month period at the council meetings on the fifth of November twenty twenty-four, tenth of June twenty twenty-five and twenty-sixth August twenty twenty-five. And two is section twenty-one ten of the meetings local law requires that these matters must be dealt with at the next meeting of council. Then three, council resolves to refer the matter to the Office of the Independent Assessor. councillor Huang.
Chair, as you know, council has been required to include certain provisions from the state government's model meeting procedures into the meetings local law. As part of that, we were forced to choose one of the two options for dealing with unsuitable meeting conduct by a councillor. One option was to deal with, with the conduct in the council meeting. This would mean councillors debating and voting on whether to take disciplinary action against their political opponents. This isn't something we consider to be appropriate in an advanced democracy. If that was what we did, I'm sure those opposite would be the first to complain about kangaroo courts. I have confidence in my colleagues to make a fair and impartial decision, but it is an important democratic principle that a process must be also be seen to be fair. that a process must be also be seen to be fair and impartial. The public must be assured that a fair process has occurred. That is why we have chosen to instead refer these matters to the independent assessor, which is the only other option available to us. As the meeting's local law and model meeting procedures require, this must be done with a council resolution. And because administration councillors cannot submit notified motions, we must suspend standing orders to deal with this matter. By, by can assure the chamber that this motion will come as no surprise to the councillors concerned. I understand, Madam Chair, that every time a motion like this has been brought to the chamber, you have written to the councillor before the meeting. You have been as transparent and fair as this process allows, Madam Chair. As councillor Wines said last week, we don't support this process, but it is the law and we must follow it. Now, it will be handed to the independent assessor, who I note has made no adverse findings regarding your handling of these matters to date. I recommend, I commend this motion to the chamber.
Further speakers. Council Griffiths.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes. So I just want to say I oppose this motion. I have been through this a number of times with the LMP. In fact, the only people who've ever complained about me, ever sent me to the office of independent, independent assessor have been LMP councillors. Never a resident, never staff, only LMP councillors in my twenty-two year history here. So it is wild. What I want to say is this process is absolutely political. We are in a political chamber, we are here with an LMP political majority, we are overseen by a biased LMP chair, who as far as I know, takes directions from people on that side of the chamber or the Lord Mayor's office in relation to how she runs the meeting. The rulings here are inconsistent, unfair, and political. They are against opposition councillors. And that will be borne out if you look back over the last, for my experience, twenty-two years and see there are only saints on that side of the chamber and the sinners are on this side of the chamber. You know, I, I just, I think this is a joke. I think this is politics at its worst. I think, you know, I, I just think this is ironical and a joke. We've seen constantly, and even today, with moving of motions against councillor Johnston, the chairperson does not follow the rules, does not even follow her own rules consistently. Last week, we had LMP councillors yelling bullshit across the chamber and the chairperson did zero. We've had an LMP councillor here call someone a piece of shit and nothing was done. We have another LMP councillor over there calling the leader of the opposition a groin rub and nothing was done. We see the use of liar, which has been forbidden in this place. When it's done by an LMP councillor or the mayor, it's ignored. Over and over and over again, this chamber is being run by someone who is political. It's being run by a group of people who are political and who are using this process. Even today, an LMP chairperson, councillor Wines, was talking about transport. And he talked about, and I thought, that's it, that's how they think. He said, we took control of this place. We took control of this place. This place is meant to be a democratic chamber where one side isn't in control. It's meant to be a place where the citizens of Brisbane are represented, and it is not. I just, we should remember, and I want this recorded, that the LMP even changed the meeting rules to try and limit and control debate. Didn't work, hasn't worked, they hate it, but they changed the rules themselves using their vast majority. I, I can only say that this is just a joke. This is just, people can see it. When they're outside the chamber, they can see how political this chamber is and how toxic it is. So my twenty-two years in this place, I know that it's been run in a very biased way, but this is some of the worst rulings that I've seen by this chairperson and in the last eighteen months. It's been run like a regime or like a dictatorship. It's not the way a good city should run, and it shows the process is not working. It shows the control of the chamber that the LMP are seeking is not working, and so I do not support this motion.
Further speakers, Council Wines.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Look, I think just in support of the resolution and the fact that this should be referred to an independent external body, I think a lot of the points that councillor Griffiths makes are why it should be dealt with by an external independent body. That, as he notes in his comments, that this, this place can be a political place. And I think it's important that any assessments made against any councillor in this place, regardless of their party affiliation, should be dealt with by the independent assessor. This, I've said it many times in this place, this part of the process I don't agree with, but it is in the statute and therefore we must do it this way. I've said I don't agree with it. I said that I don't, I don't like the, the public nature of this. I don't like guilt by accusation. I don't like that the capacity that, that anything that, any legitimate part of this process could be accused of being illegitimate. I think it's important that if, that the disciplinary matters associated with the council and quite frankly, all councils in Queensland, any of these matters should be private at first and then public only if necessary. That's my opinion. However, that is not the way the law is written. Because I don't think that this process should be available to, how the accusations that councillor Griffiths has made about the process, made about it, because it should be a fair process and it should, both he and all parties involved with it should be dealt with fairly. The independent third party external to this, to this organisation is, in my view, the only right way to do this. And therefore I'll be supporting the resolution put forward by councillor Wong that it be referred to the independent assessor for an external review. And as a result of that, I also move that this resolution now be put.
It has been moved by councillor. It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Dixon, let the motion now be put. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Griffiths and seconded by councillor Johnston. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells.
Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being fifteen in favour and seven against.
Council Wong, your right of reply.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said, you know, last week, it is a statutory referral. It is something put in place by the former Labor state government. And this chamber is just doing whatever we can to be fair and reasonable and transparent. So that's why, yeah, that's why I urge all the councillors to support this. This is the law. It is not what we like to do or not. This is the law. So please support it. Thank you.
We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Massey. Eyes to my right and nose to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells.
Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being fifteen in favour and seven against.
Councillors, please resume your seats. Are there further items of general business? Council Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to speak on six items, if I can, on general business. One, the art of embroidery. Two, Rosies, and a welcome to them to the Gab Award. Three, Dutton Park Crossing at Park Road. There was a request to talk about local issues and here it is. Four, West End State School one hundred and fifty year fiesta. Five, Pride Through Play. And six, specifically petition items and infrastructure. All right. Firstly, I just wanted to do a huge shout out to the event I attended with, through you Chair, councillor Marks, on Saturday, which was the Art of Embroidery, one of the oldest art traditions in the world. It was incredible to see the use of silk into these amazing artworks, guided by the wonderful Jenny Gao, who is an extraordinary artist. An incredible exhibition, was pleased to have been able to support it and also be there with the Chinese community and beyond, thanks to those who attended, all the artists, and of course, all the organisers. Secondly, big welcome to Rosies, who have just opened a community hub in the Manual Mission Precinct. I was privileged enough to have opened this new hub with the CEO, Jane. This event was attended by volunteers, patrons, workers, faith leaders. And I just want to highlight, there's an incredible mural in this hub, and it was created by visual artist Jake Moss. And the art really moved me because while Jake Moss is quite successful today, the, the art piece actually speaks to his time being a rough sleeper and a homeless person and the kind of support that, and compassion that he received from Rosies. And that's what Rosies does. We're very thankful that they're also in the ward and I'm looking forward to working even closer with Rosies, who I've worked with many times. Thirdly, the Dutton Park Crossing at Park Road. So there's this crossing. It's the one for the kids to get to primary school, to Dutton Park State School. It's on a crest moving uphill. Shaun, the previous lollipop person, and I had many conversations about the near misses from the kids and him. This crossing has been a huge issue, huge issue for years. And I just, I just want to highlight something that was said earlier today through you Chair by councillor Perry, answering one of the questions. How are things delivered? Community demand and safety risk. Is there a bigger risk than children potentially being run over? Now, unfortunately, we lost Shaun because he couldn't keep risking his life at that crossing. I'm putting it here in general business. I'm happy to write letters. I'm happy to get the community to like come through and contact through you Chair, councillor Perry, because this is such an important local issue. We've got to keep our kids safe. Item number four, West End State School Fiesta. About two weeks ago, the West End PNC volunteers, families, businesses held this massive Fiesta in West End to celebrate its hundredth and fiftieth anniversary. I was so pleased to have not only supported the event, but actually have a stall all day at this event. It was an incredible thing to just be with community, to have conversations. Super, super localised. A huge shout out to the PNCs and all the volunteers. What an incredible event. Great to have heaps of chats. All right, Pride Through Play. Last year, I found out that there wasn't a Rainbow Play Group on the South Side. And as soon as I found that out, I thought, what better way to support the LGBTIQ plus community than working to create a Rainbow Play Group on the South Side? And so I'm privileged to say that in two weeks' time, working with Rainbow Families and Play Matters, we'll be doing our first play date because it's important that kids can feel loved, respected, and appreciated in their Rainbow community. And lastly, just very quickly, the only thing that was guillotined by what's happened with the meeting's laws is being able to debate petitions, which are mostly in committees. That's the only way the community gets to try to run the agenda. What this councillor's guillotined is the opportunity to do that. That's a mistake.
Council Massey, your time has expired. Further speakers. Council Johnston.
I rise to speak on a number of items of general business, but in particular the Infrastructure Committee and the LMP referral process for unsuitable meeting conduct. Firstly, I want to acknowledge the sterling efforts of councillor Perry in obfuscating in the Infrastructure Committee. I think what she's forgotten is that there are a lot of people sitting in the room observing her behaviour. And they are very disappointed in the way in which she is running the meetings. It is somewhat hypocritical to stand up in this place and say, ask me questions. I want you to ask me questions about local matters. But then in committee, when the opportunity to have that discussion occurs, councillor Perry, I mean, won't even entertain questions, just blanks you completely. It's become problematic because, and that's fine. Councillor Perry thinks it's a strategy and, and that's great. But the big problem for councillor Perry is that there are people observing her behaviour. And that includes the cycling community. And this is not all councillor Perry's fault, but her predecessor councillor Murphy, and she's been the deputy now for quite some time, has sat on petitions, many of them for over a year in the Infrastructure Committee. And those petitions have not been forthcoming. When they are forthcoming, and this can be six months, nine months, a year, after they've been tabled in this place. And, and they're not necessarily sitting with the council officers because the spreadsheets I've seen say that these petitions are in a logjam personally in the chairperson's office. We know that's where the ones on Venna Road have been sitting for some months, and there are others, including the bikeway petitions that came through earlier today. Now, the bikeway petitions, the responses that we're getting to these petitions are appalling. I called them tricky last week in our committee because they're not addressing the concerns of the petitioners. The petitioners are asking for bike lanes along George Street, and they've been asking for many, many years. Instead of saying simply, we'll consider this as part of our cycling strategy, councillor Perry, and councillor Perry and the divisional chair sign off on these. It is councillor Perry who is responsible for the language. Councillor Perry who is responsible for the content. Councillor Perry who is responsible for answering the questions, or not answering, as the case may be. And yes, thank you councillor Griffiths. I suspect she is being paid for her acting role. But councillor Perry won't answer questions. On a petition about traffic calming, councillor Perry doesn't think you actually need to have figures about how many cars use the street. Councillor Perry doesn't think you need to have consulted with the local councillors, myself, councillor Massey, councillor Griffiths, on a petition on Ipswich Road. But of course councillor Perry stands up in the chamber here and says, oh, ask me questions. Well, councillor Perry in infrastructure, Madam Chair, we're trying to do that. Now councillor Chong Wah is an interested observer of, of this committee. And I, I think she's quite, she sits opposite me, so I see her face. And not only was she the only shocked one today, but so too And not only was she the only shocked one today, but so too were the new council officers who don't normally come to this meeting and who watched how it's run. The chairperson, the acting chairperson of the Infrastructure Committee won't allow debate, won't allow questions.
Won't allow debates?
No, no debates, no debate. You've got to fight her.
You can't say you abstain.
The first week I wasn't even allowed to do that. Now I can, now I can make some comment and ask some questions. But to a T, in the, I don't know, six weeks of committee we've had now, councillor Perry has not been able to answer one single question in committee. Now, okay, councillor Perry's not an expert. She's filling in for councillor Murphy. What about the most senior traffic planner sitting in the room? Could she say, dear Ms Luke, could you please answer that question for councillor Johnston? Now councillor Wines used to do that, and council officers are sitting in the room, and they could answer some of these questions. But councillor Perry doesn't think, if she doesn't know, fair enough. But if councillor Perry can't even be bothered then to ask the senior traffic officers sitting in the committee. That's how she rolls. I'll just say also on the OIA matters, the LNP stand up and say that don't support this process, yet they vote for it every single time. Me thinks that's double speak. And yes, you don't actually have to vote.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Griffiths?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's great. Thank you for giving me this time. I'd like to talk about two things. I'd like to talk about some of the follow on from last week's meeting. I had a resident drop into the office and that resident had observed last week's meeting. And it was where, you might remember, that part of the meeting where the LNP said they weren't homophobic. And then they all jumped up and we heard great speeches and I heard bullshit and I heard many things. This resident gave me this. It's a little box of beads. They're Mardi Gras beads. And they thought the LNP might be able to wear them to their next state conference. They're from New Orleans, so they're the genuine thing. The old councillor Howard. I was thinking the Lord Mayor would look nice in one of these. Maybe you can wear it. Like, they're not, they're not homophobic. They're pro-gay. They love wearing these beads. So I said, yes, I'll, I'll take them and I'll give it to them because I know that they'll love it because in fact they'll pretty be excited by it. Not much excitement over there at the moment. Anyway, okay, we'll leave it there. Anyway, I also just wanted to talk, nothing. No reaction. Would you like some beads? Anyone like some beads? Maybe the, maybe the chairperson would like some beads. Oh, they're the real McCoy. Anyway, sorry. You can, you can sort of see why this is the last remaining LNP government in, in the country. Yes, councillor Howard, I think you're very brave at the LNP convention, but you didn't win. Might be an indication that what I was saying was true. Anyway, let's, I just wanted to table this. This is the flyer that I've just put out for the ward. And it's a flyer that on the inside covers, details all the projects we got last financial year. Lots of those projects, I'll just talk for a minute, Billy. Lots of those projects because I know how to lobby and get things out of council. And then all the projects we've got for this financial year. I know there'll be some LNP councillors over there who got very, very little from their own administration. And you know why that is? It's because you don't speak up. It's because you sit in there and you're just taking it. If, if you actually, if you actually speak up, you get more for your electorates. And then you don't have to fund things out of your Seth May, like infrastructure, because you lobby for them. That's how it works in politics. So while you sit there and not do anything and not say anything, it might be great for Lord Mayor and councillor Cunningham, but it means they don't actually have to look after you or your wards. I speak up a lot. I talk up a lot and I get a lot. And I, that's the way I've managed opposition for 22 years. Oh, but the best thing here is protecting koalas and toui forest. I put this to our news department. In fact, Brad was the major they were talking about before. He actually said, no, I don't support this idea. Well, I went to the federal government and they thought it was a great idea. And they looked at the research and they supported it. So council is now building a koala and wildlife underpass on Toui Road. And we're going to fence either side of the road so the poor animals don't get squished like they do at White's Hill. This is, this is a new way of doing things. It works. So I just think, thank you to the federal government for doing that. Thank you to Graham and Jules for funding it, having a bit of foresight. And they're really interested in the rewilding stuff we're doing in the ward. The federal government are really interested in it. Liberals over here aren't interested in it because they've been here 20 years and we're just going to keep doing the same old things, the same old way. It doesn't work. But there are some people open to new ideas who want to see our city go forward. And I really say thanks for the federal government for funding this and, and thanks to our news team for actually helping us build it. That's a good outcome. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further speakers? Councillor Strong, councillor? Yeah, councillor Strong.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yes, yes, it's me. Okay, I've got, for GB, I've just got a couple of events that have just passed and a couple of future ones as well. The, my community and the community surrounding my, or the ward, all the wards surrounding my community, of course, were so happy that Bunnings has reopened finally in Oxley after the 22 floods. They, they really have invested a lot of money in this. It's probably the, this is, I call it the super Bunnings actually because it's actually bigger than your normal Bunnings and it's all above the floodplain or flood levels of 22 anyways. All the parking's down below as a lot of the new Bunnings are going or doing that. Casha Ridge being, and Bundamba being another one. Anyways, and, and the, and the, and the groups that are actually waiting for this Bunnings to open up are our community groups who do the fundraising with the sausage sizzle. I know my own Lions Club, Rotary Club, Forest Lake as well. We've had to sort of share spot, space at, at another Bunnings closest to us until the, the Oxley one reopened. And it had opened on, there was a soft opening on the first of September. There'll be a little bit bigger opening this coming weekend as well because they're obviously trying to get their staff all trained up and to deal with a huge influx of customers that are going to race through and buy a lot of stuff, I'm sure. Anyways, that's, that's one item. And the other was that the Lord Mayor mentioned it was the Sri Lankan Day Festival out at Rocks River. Fantastic venue, although, and I've said it before, and councillor Hutton, don't take too much of offense, but I think we need to do some more, well, we need to work on the parking. Right? Because it is too successful. And, and I know one of, one of my team was coming out there with me and they said, well, why can't we use that space over there? That other green space over there for more parking? And I said, well, you know, it's green space. But I think we need to do something about the parking. It is a really fantastic venue. I know you're spending a lot of money on doing up the water, the water play area as well to the tune of a million dollars, I think, something like that. So it's just going to attract more and more and more and more people. And we really, and for the people to really enjoy themselves, they, they don't want to be in a parade going around in circles, waiting for someone to leave anyways, which was the case, the case recently. Anyways, the Sri Lankan, Dr Jay and his team did it, there were 23 actual organising committee. And Dr Jay, leading it off, did an unbelievable job. It's just getting better and better and bigger and bigger every year. They do an unbelievable job with, with the dance program, the singing and dancing, of course, the food is, you know, fantastic as, as usual. There's more and more stalls every year and, and they, and they do attract thousands of people right around. Not, not just people from Sri Lanka, but from all walks of life, all cultures. Gee whiz, you know, we had, we had, and a lot of the other cultural groups come along and perform as well. So they do reach out to the other cultural groups and for dancing and performance as well, which is, which is terrific. They do, they do it. It's, I think the cost was under $40,000, I think Dr Jay said. And, and they do struggle to pull all that together with a lot of the sponsorships from corporates and things like that. But it's, in the end, it's well worth the, well, well worth the trouble and the time that they go through. And I'm sure they've started planning next year already. All right. So that's, that's good to see. Coming up on the 13th, we have the Forest Lake Festival, which is, will be about the fourth or fifth year now it's being held. The organisers work closely with my office for some support wherever they need it. And we're always helping to, to help out the organisers for the, for the, for the festival. Thousands, you know, thousands of patrons come through over, over a period of hours, right? There's probably about a thousand at any, any given time because it's not a huge area. We, they, we've even, in the last couple of years, there, we've even had a road closure so that we could actually get more stalls in.
Councillor Strong, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Kim?
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on one councillor in particular, who I believe is worthy of a round of applause tonight and also some great work that he's done, councillor Steve Griffiths. Thank you for everything that you have done advocating for your community for more than 20 years. Despite the motion tonight moved by councillor Stephen Huang and the LNP regime, what we really should be putting on the record is the real community work that Steve has done representing his community. In fact, his election results prove the fact that he represents what residents are really thinking on the ground. And what the LNP have done today is actually silenced the voice of his residents in his area. Because anytime councillor Griffiths has been called out by this LNP chair, it was whenever he was speaking truth on what residents have been complaining about on the ground. And it's the kind of complaints that local residents need this LNP council to hear, but it's the kind of thing that they just don't want to listen to. And I think what today demonstrates is exactly the same experience I had being elected as a new councillor when I realised that this LNP council had transferred assets from the Callumbell Ward Office to different LNP ward offices as well. Something else to mention today as well is the Lord Mayor mentioned that sometimes things get political. They put marquees in, in council parks, they see the greens marquees there. But I also wanted to put on record the LNP councillor for Callumbell many years ago, who would call the rapid response group on us as we were campaigning. So she was calling council officers for political purposes. So I was, I was campaigning and then, and then the car would pull up and then I'd be pulled aside and spoken to about whatever her complaint was. They would come out with their measuring tape and then measure the core flute despite the fact that it was clearly a standard size. This is what happened, even during the Stredham by-election as well. So if we want to look at reports today, I think we should go back through all the files for the council of Callumbell Ward from the LNP many years ago, and we will see so many things that haven't been executed of misconduct in this council here. So I think this is a complete double standard. You can go back through all of the recordings and see what councillor Griffiths was addressing in relation to all of these reports that we've made today about him. And all residents will see, they'll be on his side because what he's talking about is exactly what they want him to. So we've got a councillor here today who is truly fighting for his residents. I mean, I'd take a page out of his book, given how long he's been in the community for. I've met councillor Griffiths' residents as well. They, they are real people who care about real council issues. He loves what he does. It's all local government. He really is passionate about it. He's written all these reports. I mean, we're learning from Steve's office every day about what they do, councillor Griffiths, sorry. And we couldn't stop commending his work enough. I think today's motion doesn't do any justice about what's really happening on the ground. It's clearly just political. If you objectively laid out everything that he's said and he's done, you'll see that it'll come back with nothing. And that's exactly what's going to happen here today. I mean, this is just clearly a very, very political move. It's, and if they, yeah. And earlier we, we heard from the LNP Transport Chair councillor Wines about how this is some kind of separate process to maintain privacy with the OIA. Except let's not forget about the time where councillor Collier's email was suddenly addressed in council debate many months ago. An email that she sent internally with private details of a constituent. They exposed all of that in this council chamber here, all on public record as well. Well, how about that privacy right there? There's a double standard there. There's constant, constant rules that are being breached. I mean, so many times we've been stopped on this side of the chamber when you hear the entire other side just going off and going off. This is a very, that's right, even, even it's in a break. And this is an obvious political move. I think councillor Griffiths deserves so much more justice than this process. We will continue to stand up for the things that he does. It's reflected in the resident support as well. We also, we also, just in reference to what happened last week too, it is a real disgrace to see how this chamber has blown up and how everybody has responded, given that we have real issues in this city to address. We've got a cost of living crisis. We've got a housing crisis. But what we heard earlier today was nothing. And the latest we have is a 2021 report about a strategy and nothing further from there. We walk down Brisbane City right now. If we go out there tonight, you'll see people sleeping on the streets. When you go down, when, when you go out to Polara tonight, when you see people trying to get off the bus, trying to run home because they're scared because there's no adequate lighting, there are advocacy groups out there like Queensland Walks who do great work, who are trying to improve this. There are so many issues that you can just ride off the back of your palm. You don't even need speech notes for it. We could go on and on and on. But tonight we decide to play politics. The LNP council decided to pick something that's completely different. This is what happens when you've been here for 20 years. You get arrogant and then you pick on someone and then you try to abuse that power. We heard that in the language that was exercised earlier today, a form of control, and it's wrong. And we will continue to hammer on with that point for as long as locals are put first. We will continue to fight that and residents will reflect that through the way that they vote at the next election.
Further speakers? Deputy Mayor?
Oh, thanks, Madam Chair.
Just one moment, Deputy Mayor. We'll wait until the chamber's quiet.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Could you advise how long is left in the one hour of general business?
No. Council, Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm conscious that the clerks have been here for a while now and we are due to go to dinner. But it's really important that we talk about the great multicultural and community events that are coming up in our ward. And there is another weekend ahead with more multicultural and community festivals in our beautiful suburbs. And many of our councillors, I know, will be supporting our local Japanese community by attending the Matsuri Festival.
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor. You were all heard in complete silence. So show the same respect. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Madam Chair. As I was saying, the Matsuri Japanese Festival is on, on this Saturday at White's Hill State College. Last year, we had over 18,000 visitors. There are, there were 100 stalls, over 200 volunteers worked for months to put this on. It's a free entry, great entertainment for the whole family. There's lots of hands-on activities, cultural workshops, stage shows and traditional performances. But probably the most favourite part for me is the authentic street food that you get to try. They also have a Japanese-style bar. Perhaps some of our councillors might like to come along and enjoy some Japanese culture and learn more about our wonderful multiculturalism that we have here in Brisbane. So I'd just like to recommend it to the chamber and hope to see many of the councillors there supporting our multicultural community.
Any further speakers? That's it, councillor Johnston. That is the end of the meeting. Thank you, councillors.